Okay, are we ready? Let's start. A meeting of the Select Board of Brookline for November 5th, 2019. Let's start out with any announcements or updates from the Select Board. Anyone have anything to remind people of?
I just want to remind folks that on Monday, six days from now, the town is going to be celebrating Veterans Day. And as I rifle through my papers looking for the program, I will fill in by saying I think our very own select person, Hamilton, is going to be sharing some thoughts with those assembled. This ceremony is going to take place again Monday, November 11th, at 11:00 a.m. in front of Town Hall. Of course, all are welcome and there'll be a light collation held at the Veterans Post following the remembrance and the ceremony.
Those ricotta shells are amazing.
And even those who are not attending as a speaker should consider going. It's an interesting event. It draws a lot of people. And of course, the collation is always enjoyable afterwards. Any other announcements? Okay, move on. Public comment. Do we have any members of the public who? Oh, we don't have anyone signed up. So does anyone who is here and hasn't signed up like to make their comment? Seeing none, let's move on. Question of approving the Select Board minutes of October 15 and October 22. Have people had an opportunity to make any edits to correct things in the minutes?
I have some edits. Got to figure out how to get them to ceremony.
Okay. I have some edits too. Could you pass them on?
Well, they're all in digital format, so I gotta move it over.
We can't cut and paste either. That's something that we need to work on. Okay, next. 3C and 3D have been taken off the calendar.
It's 3B.
All right. 3B, question of approving and executing a proclamation recognizing Saturday, November 30, 2019, as Small Business Saturday. Do we have that proclamation?
We do.
Okay. So I will read this. Small Business Saturday, November 30, 2019. Whereas the Brookline Select Board on behalf of the town of Brookline, Massachusetts celebrates local small businesses and the contributions that they make to our local economy and community. And whereas, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 330.7 million small businesses in the United States that represent 99.7% of all businesses with employees in the United States and are responsible for 64.9% of the net new jobs created since 2000. And whereas, small businesses employ 47.3% of the employees in the private sector in the United States. All those are, I assume, are from the Small Business Administration. And whereas, surveys show that up to 90% of consumers in the United States say Small Business Saturday has had a positive impact on their community. And whereas, surveys also show that up to 96% of consumers who reported shopping on Small Business Saturday said the day makes them want to shop small all year long, not just during the holiday season. And whereas, surveys also show that up to 73% of consumers who reportedly shopped small at independently owned retailers and restaurants on Small Business Saturday did so with friends or family. And whereas, the most reported reason for consumers aware of the day to shop and dine at small independently owned businesses was to support this community. And whereas, Brookline, Massachusetts supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our community. And whereas, advocacy groups as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, the Select Board of the town of Brookline, Massachusetts, on behalf of the residents of Brookline hereby proclaims November 30, 2019, as Small Business Saturday. The Select Board further urges the residents of the town of Brookline to join communities across the country in support of small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the day. Any questions regarding the proclamation? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Okay. 3E. Question of approving pre-guaranteed maximum price change order amendment, number 10, in the amount of $4,297,102 with Scanska USA Building, Inc. in connection with a high school expansion project. Mr. Masak?
Ray Masak, Building Department. This is another small chunk. It's eight filed subtrades that were bid. And we're putting this before you so we can continue with the project. Anytime we have a distinct amount of bids, we're putting them before you. And these are parts of the project, as I said, that were bid.
Any questions? Okay, I have one question. I'd like you to explain for the audience how these contracts work. Because in this, in the documents, there is an item for $433,931 labeled a overrun. Now, that sounds kind of shocking that we have such a large overrun. But I'm not sure that that's really what you're referring to. So if you could sort of explain how these amendments to the contract work, I think it'd be helpful to the audience in understanding what's really going on here. Or maybe we need to change the wording if it's not really an overrun as we usually think of that word.
An overrun? I'm not sure where that was in the document.
Page 57. Well, actually, you don't have it in our document.
I believe it's in the document from Hill International, from, signed by Andy Felix. He lists the savings/overruns are in parentheses.
Oh, as we bid, we're, Mr. Chairman, we're comparing to what the budget is and that we are seeing some of these items are bid under and some are bid over. Right now, the trend is over.
Is there another word we can use?
We'll try to find another word.
Maybe just over budget. I mean, he uses over budget in the bottom line, total net over budget. Maybe that's what the term he should use. I think that's clearer to people.
I mean, maybe no one reads these documents, but if they do, I just don't want that to pop out and cause volley of emails to the Select Board. Any other questions?
Well, just to be clear, the change order before us is not for that large sum. It's for just over $4,000. So there's a lot going on here. But the pre-GMP amendment that's before the Board is for, according to the documents, $5,307.
That's $5 million.
Oh, $5 million, excuse me. Yes. I withdraw my comments.
What I try to do is, for the most part, is get our outside owners' project manager to weigh in on whether we should be moving forward with the work. And they've reviewed it and felt we should move forward.
Right. Okay. I move approval of the pre-GMP change order amendment.
Mr. Chairman, if it could be for 106 instead of 102. I made a slight mistake.
Okay, so $4,297,106?
Yes, please.
So I move approval of the change, of the pre-GMP guaranteed maximum price change order slash amendment, number 10, the amount of $4,297,106 with Scanska USA Building, Inc. in connection with the high school expansion project. Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Thank you. Okay. Question of approving a temporary wine and malt beverage license to the Lars Anderson Auto Museum to be held on Saturday, November 19, for a product launch. And question of approving a temporary all kinds alcoholic beverage sales license to Brookline Food Pantry to be held on Saturday, November 16, for a fundraising reception. I'd like to do those together. I believe the Police have okayed both of them and everything else is in place in terms of the certifications that we require. Any questions? No? Okay. Move approval of the two temporary wine and, well, I move approval of the temporary wine and malt beverages license to Lars Anderson Auto Museum and the temporary all kinds alcohol beverages license to Brookline Food Pantry. All in favor? Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. So, next. Question of approving the application of 1032 Beacon Street doing business as Bar Cino Holder of an all kinds of alcoholic beverages license as a common victor at 1032 Beacon Street for the appointment of Samantha Leek and Anthony Dorothy as alternate managers. Is there anyone appearing or need to appear? I don't believe so.
I was making a note. I believe it's pronounced Bar Chinos.
Sorry.
Saw a sign that told me how to pronounce it.
Oh, okay. I didn't read that sign, sorry.
And I see a precinct one time meeting member here. I don't know if he's here to talk about this item or something else, but he may want to offer comments under the.
Mr. Franco?
Chairman Franco, Town Meeting Member, Precinct One. I'm sorry to take up the Board's time. I thought that the applicants for these positions would be here. And I simply wanted to remind them of the concern the Board has had and what's in the license with respect to this location from previous occupancies. We look forward to having this restaurant open soon. Thank you very much.
I seem to recall receiving an email or some communication regarding those issues. Did that come from you?
No.
Okay. Well, Mr. Franklin, can we make sure that the company receives these concerns?
I didn't receive anything, so.
I think there are conditions that are already on the license that we issued a few weeks ago, maybe months ago. And it's the same issues we dealt with with the previous tenant, which was noise from the exhaust van, noise from cleanup around the patio with the closing time, trash and refuse depositing at the end of the night in the back. It's just general noise and nuisance issue, so.
This will be an occasion. We'll send them around again.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, all in favor of approving the application of 1032 Beacon Street doing business as Bar?
Chino?
Chino. For all kinds of alcoholic beverages license as a common victor. On favor, say aye. Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Special Town Meeting Warrant. This is just the warrant for the December 10, 2019 special election that the Board has to sign. There's no reason for, there's nothing for us to vote. It's just to give notice that this warrant will be signed by the Board after the meeting.
Typically, we do vote to approve the warrant.
Okay.
But, you know, it is what it is. It's a petitioned, it's a petitioned. Oh, no.
Well, no, this one is the one that we've already voted.
That's right. This is the, yeah, you've called the election, but typically, we vote to execute the warrant.
Okay, let's do it.
Well, let me just note that December 10 is Election Day. Normal polling hours, 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. in the same polling locations as folks went to back in May. So different day, but same location, same hours.
Can I ask a question? I remember when we voted last time, Mr. Franco had outlined some concerns that he hoped would be addressed. They don't seem to be addressed in the warrant itself, so I'm wondering how that's going to happen.
You're talking about the request I made last week for office space and maybe to be included in the Driscoll Plan.
Well, that's not going to be in the language for the vote. I mean, that will be addressed as the planning and redesigning of the building goes forward.
And I believe the school committee is meeting with the architect this week.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Abstain.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Boards and Commissions. First, following candidates for reappointment, appointment to the following boards and commissions will appear for interviews. Transportation Board, Elena Housman. Is that correct pronunciation?
Elena.
Elena. Didn't I say Elena? I have a niece named Elena, so I should know that. Come on up.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening. So tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in being on the Transportation Board and what you can contribute to it.
Sure. So my name is Elena Housman and I'm a Brookline resident at 1157 Beacon Street. I'm a renter. I also work here in Brookline at a climate foundation. It's a small family fund called Grow All Family Fund. And most of my work revolves around climate change and doing climate change research. And so what really interests me about becoming part of the Transportation Board here at Brookline is thinking about how transportation impacts our community at the level of climate change. We all know that it's happening. It's incredibly important. And, you know, I think if we think holistically and innovatively, there's a lot of ways in which we can move people efficiently throughout our town, through our town, as well as, you know, also considering the impacts of climate within all of those decisions.
Any questions? Well, I have one question. You say in your application that you'd like to ensure that transportation is efficient, safe, and just for all. Flesh out what you mean by just transportation. It's not just transportation, it's just.
Yes, absolutely. So when I was at the University of Michigan earning my master's degree, I actually earned it in a track called Environmental Policy, Planning, and Justice. And what that really means is ensuring that environmental decisions are made in a way that don't necessarily impact people of color, people of low income backgrounds, and ensuring that those decisions are made equitably across, you know, whether it's representation or ensuring that those people are able to join the conversation or brought along in the conversation. And so what I really meant in that statement was thinking about how we can bring in different stakeholders, primarily those of people of color, low income backgrounds. I've, I don't go to too many of town meetings, but I've been to my fair share and I've noticed not a large representation of millennials or renters in the community as well. And so I think that's an untapped constituency that we could engage in transportation issues here in Brookline.
Mr. Fernandez?
Sure. Can you talk a little bit about your experience on the Brookline Bicycle Advisory Committee and how that might sort of impact the contributions you'd make to the Transportation Board?
Yeah, absolutely. So I joined the Bicycle Advisory Committee in December of last year, primarily because I wanted to engage with my community and build community. For the first time, from living in Boston for over a decade, I really felt a place of home. I'm originally from Austin, Texas. And, you know, I think that place of home really came from primarily the fact that my rent didn't increase. So I really felt like I'm going to be here for a while. And I really felt a sense of ownership towards Brookline as my home. And so that's why I joined the BAC. And my experience there has been incredible. I've met a wide range of stakeholders, you know, people who are concerned about safety, people who are concerned about safe routes to schools and their children being able to have independence around Brookline. You know, folks who are, you know, primarily interested, you know, there's a vast majority of them have different issuers that they really care about, not just bicycle or bicycle infrastructure. And I think really what's been eye opening is kind of listening to all of those perspectives and understanding them and then also incorporating them into, not that we make very many decisions at the BAC, but incorporating them into our decision making and our priorities in which we kind of act as the BAC. The two projects that I've been primarily focusing on as a BAC member has been kind of more on the technological side of things. Given my age, probably, I've done a few surveys and helped on the backend of sorts of projects. But really, the Beacon Street Bridleway has been a project that I've helped organize both of those events, the one that happened in May as well as in October, just a few weeks ago. And so being part of that, being out in the community on those particular days has been really rewarding.
Thank you.
So the Transportation Board is one of the hardest working boards in town and it's got sort of the most difficult job to do. Like the Planning Board, they're sort of moderating between computing interests and folks with really passionate viewpoints on either end of the barbell. Can you walk me through how you might try and thread the needle and come up with a solution that makes everybody perhaps equally unhappy, but gets the job done, keeps transportation flowing through town, and maybe advances the agenda of trying to diversify the mix of different transportation users and roadway users here in Brookline?
Yeah, absolutely. I think when thinking about the trade offs in transportation, whether it's vehicular transportation or mass transit or bicycle pedestrians, what have you, I think inherently there are trade offs. And in my day to day job, we see that a lot in climate change. There's trade offs in, you know, am I going to be driving to work or am I going to be walking to work? You know, one, ideally, you know, no one is less safe because of another user, whether it's on the road or on the sidewalk or, you know, what have you. And so I think balancing those trade offs and weighing the pros and cons is something that everyone on the Transportation Board has to do. I think Chris Dempsey and Todd Crane do an incredible job of weighing those tensions and trade offs. I think just recognizing them and understanding that there are really hard decisions to be made and also acknowledging that you're not going to be able to make everyone happy because that's just kind of the nature of how it all works. So, yeah, I don't know if that's a great example or answer to your question, but that's how I would approach it.
So I had, I have a cousin who is legally blind and so she will never be issued a driver's license. She uses an adult tricycle to get around and also mass transit. That was one of the reasons I fought for the scooter pilot program to come to Brookline. So can you just elaborate on thoughts about justice? Some people think that vehicles mean that people with disabilities can get around, when in fact, legal blindness is one of the most common forms of disability. It affects about 60% of people who identify having a disability. Can you just talk about social equitable access to transportation? How that relates to vehicle ownership?
That's a great question. And I think I could draw on my own experiences. I live in a rental building here in Brookline and in order to own a car and to park that vehicle in our parking lot behind our building, it costs $225 a month. And that's something as an environmental professional living in Boston is something that I can't personally afford to do. So, you know, I don't own a vehicle, but I think what's something that's really great about Brookline is that I have a vast majority of my options are, you know, I have a Zipcar membership, I have a monthly T-Pass. I've tried the scooters, you know. And I think that's what's really great about Brookline, that I do have access to all of those. And I think having that access provided to everyone is really important. I don't see it as a barrier to me that I don't own a vehicle. I actually find it quite liberating and the fact that I can go to and rent a Zipcar literally outside of my doorstep and run the errands that I need to while also having the streets and the transportation means. You know, I also benefit from having streets and roads and cart infrastructure. You know, when I use a car, I have the same benefits when I ride my bike or when I walk. I appreciate all of those types of infrastructure. And I think ensuring that everyone, you know, whether they're low income, whether they have a disability, has access to a scooter or to a Zipcar or to safe infrastructure if they want to walk or if they want to bike or if they use a wheelchair, that the sidewalks are smooth and there's no obstructions. So I think that's how my approach is, just drawing on my own experience of not personally owning a car. But having, you know, one of the main reasons I live here in Brookline is because I have the option to not own a car, which is privileged in and of itself. There are other communities in the country that you have to own a car. And the cost associated to that is quite substantial.
Thank you.
Whenever I run into someone from places like Austin, which I've never been to, but I hear, it's a great music town, and also it's a relatively new town. So I assume, without any real knowledge, that the roads are fairly wide and well designed. Give me your thoughts on how, from the Transportation Board's perspective, we can deal with the fact that in Brookline, an old, old city or town, our roads tend to be relatively narrow, except for, of course, the bridle path, you know, along Beacon Street. But, you know, for the most part, you know, not designed in the way that I assume Austin roads are designed that allow you to use, you know, broad parts of it to accommodate different modes of transportation.
Yeah, so I think this really goes back to trade offs and sometimes uncomfortable trade offs. I think we see this in climate change all the time. You know, when there's space allowed for vehicles to park or to drive or multiple lanes for driving, I think. And when space is clearly an issue, especially in Brookline and Massachusetts, I think I've driven across the state of Texas once and it took 12 hours. And I can do it in two, two and a half in Massachusetts. So I think, you know, space, we're a much more condensed geographical area. And I think that's a misnomer to limit ourselves by space. I think there's a lot of opportunity to reimagine what the roads we have in front of us, to incorporate innovative infrastructure, to provide transportation for everyone and to move people efficiently, not just cars, not just buses, not just bikes. I think there's, there'll be trade offs that need to be made, but I think, I think everyone could live happily with some slight trade offs on each side of the equation.
Any other questions? Okay, we will be voting on membership on the Transportation Board at a later meeting.
Great.
But thank you for your insights.
Yeah, thank you so much for your time.
Next is Jonathan Kupust. Did I pronounce that right?
Kappas.
Kappas.
Is that the first person?
Sorry.
The Chair is fair. He pronounces everyone's name wrong. I have people I've worked with for many years who continue to do that, so it's quite all right.
Well, you're interviewing to be reappointed to the Transportation Board. Tell me a little bit about yourself and why you want to continue in that position.
Are you looking for just in the past three years or just a little bit about myself?
A little bit about yourself or?
I know there are reappointment applications like this. So I've lived in Brookline for the last five years. I am by trade a civil engineer, registered professional engineer in the state of Mass, Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I work for a local company in downtown, in Back Bay of Boston. I have a young son.
Does he ride a tricycle?
No, he does not. Not yet, but he talks about scooters an awful lot right now, so.
How old is he?
He is, he'll be two in less than a month.
Boy, they start young.
Okay, that gives our vast TV audience, and it is significant, sense of who you are. Tell us why, what you can contribute as continuing on the Transportation Board.
Sure. When I joined the Transportation Board three years, just about three years ago, I thought I, it would just be a simple extension of what I do on an everyday basis, but it's. but it's really more than that. It's this opportunity to use what I know as a professional, and bring back to the community the knowledge and experience that I have from the private side onto the public side. It's rewarding for me, in the sense that I get to give back to the community on a volunteer basis, such as working on the Transportation Board. And it's valuable in a sense that there are so many different areas of Brookline, and for lack of a better term, little microclimates of Brookline, where you have North Brookline and South Brookline, and then beautiful tiny streets, and large boulevards, and state-owned roads, and local roads, and the ability to manage all of them and intertwine them into a workable network is just so valuable to the community.
You're a Transportation Board, a Transportation Engineer by trade.
I am a Highway Engineer by trade, yes.
So, what decisions that you have made on the Transportation Board do you consider to be most impactful? Of the many, many?
There have been a number of contentious issues over the last three years. I actually joined the Transportation Board towards the tail end of Babcock Street.
You missed all the fun.
And boy, did I get an education right off the bat. So, the votes taken on Babcock Street were, I'll say contentious, to put it mildly, but I think those might have been the biggest crowds we had in the last three years. But the ability to redo Babcock Street and provide new space for all modes, and better space, especially for pedestrians, I mean, I remember walking down Babcock Street before it was refinished, and it was, it was rough, has been, that was a big one. All of the school votes that we've taken, especially the parking, and the sunset clause that we currently have for parking, focusing on waiting for a transportation demand management plan, that was valuable and memorable. I've been the liaison for the Pedestrian Advisory Committee since its inception, and I would hope that they have appreciated my input as they worked to create themselves and form an identity. They have put out, they'll be putting out their second study next month, I think, but their first study was a corridor, a look at the corridor of Longwood Avenue from Harvard Street to the town line, and the results of that are now being incorporated into multiple improvement programs that Todd is working on. So, that was a valuable thing to be a part of, not necessarily a vote that I took, but I gave a lot of input to the pedestrian board on that.
Any other questions?
Hey, what's, I'm wondering, you know, you've been on the board for a little bit, what is one difficult change that you'd like to see us make, and that you'd want to push for going forward, and what do you think is holding us back from making that change?
In terms of?
Anything related to transportation in the town.
Boy. So, one of the hardest things that we have to deal with, and I don't think it's something you can necessarily change, because I believe it's written into state law, are the 40B projects, and how the right, the ability for the Transportation Board to provide input on those is moved to the zoning board. And that makes it a little bit more difficult to implement a town-wide plan when those individual projects have control over, say, what goes on on the street corner, or the adjacent intersections, or the road that they're in front of. I know it's not something that the select board can actually change, but it is something that is occasionally frustrating when those projects come before us, the zoning board does take into account our input, but it does make things a little difficult.
Any other? Mr. Franco.
I'm intrigued by something you said in your application, and that's around needing to establish better east-west connections. Can you just expand on that presumably multi-year vision for how we might reshape the way folks get around town?
Yeah, I mean, there's two major east-west corridors through Brookline. One is state-owned, and one is town-owned, but paid for, was paid for with state money for its improvement a decade ago. So, both of them require a lot of state input, and that makes it more complicated to implement change. It's not, that's not necessarily a bad thing, that change comes a little bit more slowly, right? But, the big problem from, say, the end of the C-line all the way into Kenmore is that there's inconsistency. There's inconsistency in lane arrangements, there's inconsistency in sidewalk use, there's inconsistency in bicycle accessibility. The bigger problem with Route 9 is that it's for commuters, essentially. It was never intended to be a route that has a shared-use path along it, or has excellent transit running along it. And there's a bus route that runs down Route 9, but I've taken it once because the C-line, or the D-line was down, and I kind of regretted it after I got on. It took a long time to get it. But, the idea would be to have that vision. I know there are long-term visions from green routes, both in Brookline and within the state, of having a multi-use path along Route 9, but it takes a group effort to get things like that done between Brookline and Newton and the state. Similarly, with the bridle path, it requires mass dots to weigh in, and those are things that require a lot of coordination, a lot of balance between modes. Balance is hard. We just, we talked a lot about it with the previous candidate. It's not, it's not necessarily easy to balance all the modes. The important part with transportation is that it's there for all users. You know, it works for one person, doesn't necessarily work for, it works for one person in North Brookline, might not necessarily work for someone who lives in South Brookline, but they both need to get to the same place.
Yeah, I agree with that. I'll just say that I think transportation's a matter of context as well, and in the Route 9 context, there's a lot of vision about what may abut Route 9 in terms of development. So, there's a cross-functional conversation that needs to happen.
So, I'm wondering whether you have any ideas about influencing or working with the T on improving the service? I mean, you mentioned before the bus that goes down Route 9, and I've had horrendous experience on the B-line, where I, you know, I live near, and other people have complained about the others, and the governor keeps saying, well, they're going to spend a lot of money and fix things up, but I'm just wondering whether you have any ideas about steps the Transportation Board can take to encourage better service by the T?
Yeah, I think we recently, we recently sent a letter to the T through PTAC that encouraged some of those changes to occur, particularly around the Better Bus Project that the T is doing right now. Some of that will, could eventually involve trade-offs that we will have to, we will have to deal with when the T approaches us with ideas, such as priority bus lanes and things like that. The tough part will be trying to figure out how to incorporate all these great bump-outs that we have for pedestrians that shorten the crosswalks while still providing better bus service through areas, and maybe it's not priority bus lanes, maybe it's just queue-jump lanes instead. What would be great is if the new fare collection system came faster, but it's, it'll get here when it gets here, and that will certainly help with bus boarding, because you'll be able to board through any door. I'm encouraged by all the efforts that have been going on recently with the grade crossings on Beacon Street. Certainly getting full-height platforms at more stations would be, would be a boon to Beacon Street. Some of those are pretty tough, especially when you're on one of the higher trains. As far as, as far as the B-line, I'm sorry, I don't ride it very often.
You're lucky.
It's all the way on the other side, but I know those platforms are pretty small as well. And maybe, you know, there's an opportunity there with the bridle path to incorporate some wider spaces if we can put the bridle path through on Beacon Street someday in the future, and increase some of the platform widths that are relatively narrow right now.
So, I'm glad that you brought up Longwood. I live on Longwood, and I walk it quite often. I was at a Safe Roots to Schools meeting last week and learned that a child had been hit, not the same child, there had been two separate incidences at the corner of Kent and Longwood. I also have found out recently that a pedestrian is hit in Brookline once a week by a vehicle. It's so severe that they are sent to the hospital about 50% of the time, so twice a month. As a transportation highway engineer, you probably know that we've typically designed roads for the movement of cars. We're now starting to move towards designing for the movement of people. Can you talk about the trade-offs of when you design for vehicles versus the movement of people, and putting safety first?
Yeah, I mean, the first part of any good design is to find out what the predominant use is of that area in general, right? It's not just, like you said, it's not just about the cars in the area. There are intersections in Brookline and the greater Boston area that have a much heavier pedestrian use than they do vehicle. And I think one, one of the important aspects on Longwood is that it is the primary route to LMA, and there really is no other connection from the heart of Brookline into LMAs than for Longwood. So, I know I have walked with dozens of people in front of me and behind me on those narrow sidewalks, that crosswalks aren't lined up with sidewalks. There are, you mentioned Kent and Longwood, that is possibly one of the smallest staging areas for pedestrians you could possibly imagine, and these roads weren't built even for cars, some of them. Some of them were built for horse and buggy. It's a, those intersections are very difficult, and maybe that is a location where using some sort of priority during peak hours could be a benefit. There is parking along one side, and oftentimes in the morning, it's not as full. Maybe there's an opportunity to share that area for a couple hours a day, so that there is more space for queuing for pedestrians at intersections. Maybe there's an opportunity to bump out some of the intersections. The tough part, of course, with all of that is making sure that our emergency vehicles, especially with LMA right there, can get to the locations where they need to go, and that's a, that's a whole nother effort for Todd and his team.
You're a cyclist, correct?
I cycle, but I do not commute cycle.
Okay.
My primary mode to and from work is the D-line. But a wise woman, Wendy Lammon, once told me that everyone is a pedestrian, whether you walk, drive, bicycle, take public transit, every single person is a pedestrian at one point. It's just a matter of fact. So, providing good accessibility, fair accessibility on the sidewalks, is just so valuable for both, for every, for every mode that travels through the city, the town.
Great, so, we're not voting tonight for a future meeting, and thank you, Mr. Kapust.
Kappas.
Kappas. Thank you very much, have a good night.
I apologize for that. Okay, Cynthia Lee. Is Lee another member of the Transportation Board seeking reappointment?
Hello?
Tell us a little bit about yourself, and why you want to stay on the Transportation Board, and why you should stay on.
I absolutely love it. I've been on for about 18 months. I start, I became involved with how things moved around town with, actually, I live on Babcock Street, so I lived through that three, three and a half year battle, so I know it very well. Through that process, I noticed there's a certain class of people that were not heard, and I've known, I've told you this many occasions, I don't think that the handicapped were having a voice, I don't think the elderly had a voice. So, when I applied for the Transportation Board, I knew those were the two key functions I wanted to focus on, albeit looking at the entire picture of everything, but I admit that was part of my focus. I am the liaison to the Commission of Disability as well. I think transportation around Brookline is a compromise. Unfortunately, we don't have streets wide enough to accommodate everybody. If we could, I mean, that would be great, but we have very certain constraints that we have to work with. I think the focus of what I want to bring to the Transportation Board, and I think I have over the last 18 months, is trying to find a compromise for every single class of motor transportation, whether somebody's walking, biking, driving, somebody who has a wheelchair, somebody who may need walking, a cane, or has a walker, or anything. And besides that, even the children, I mean, looking at things that we've discussed over the last year and a half, you have to look at that, you know, they're walking to school, they're very short, they're hard to see behind a car, they're at a crosswalk, so removing a parking spot sometimes unfortunately, which will push one back, so somebody who's only about yay high can walk out between, to go through a crosswalk. So, there's a lot of things that you have to look at, and I think that, over the year, it really, I have seen a lot of change. I see that, driving through town right now, I see a lot of things that we voted on on the Transportation Board, and I like seeing it done, and I think it's safer. I was just over on Station Street, and they're fixing the crosswalk there, they're doing one on Abbotsford, things like that, really, it's nice to see things that we have discussed and is put through the process.
So, other than Babcock Street, what are the hot issues that you've dealt with that you think you've made a big impact on behalf of the town?
I think Baldwin was tough.
Tell me about it.
I think part of, I think that within first couple of months of my first meet, first time, we voted on a stop sign that a town meeting member asked to have Todd do a traffic assessment on. This was up near Washington Square. So, we voted to have one put on the street, so that would make the intersection safer. Town meeting member then appealed it to this board. That was a tough one. First, I, during the meeting, when he first said he wanted it, and then he said that he did not want it, and I asked him, I'm like, now you don't want this? And he said, no. But I think that balance there was that, looking at the safety assessment that Todd does, and reading that how much, like, a car can go over the speed limit, this particular intersection was tough, because it ended up being in a V, so you couldn't see if you're heading into it. Balancing those, I mean, that was a tough one, and to think something that we voted on for their own safety, then that they didn't want, which I think is tough. I mean, we're here on the Transportation Board to ensure that we keep everybody safe, and then they didn't want it. That was, that was hard, but we actually kept what we voted on. That was, that was hard, but we actually kept what we voted for, so that was fine.
Mr. Franco.
Jonathan's reference to east-west connections on his application and the question I asked, um, made me, made me remember Babcock, the Babcock Street conversation in a slightly different context than we frequently talk about it. And that's the fact that it's a major north-south connection, which is where this town really sort of falls down in terms of transportation planning. That there's a lot of traffic that's going Brookline to Cambridge that we really don't accommodate in a, in a great way. And there's really no adequate public transportation connection. And I'll bring that back to, to Babcock Street in that, in the urban ring plan of ten years ago. Babcock Street was one of those locations that was earmarked for improved north-south connection. And now it's got a little bit of a spotlight on it with the straightening of the Pike and West Station and that Beacon Park yard conversation. So how do we, how do we do a better job when we talk about Babcock Street again and improved north-south connection? And don't repeat the errors, the mistakes that we made with this last conversation about improvements to Babcock Street?
I think that the streets around there, when they come up, it has to be full disclosure to the neighborhood. I think that when something is presented, um, and not given enough notice, I think that creates more frustration to the neighborhood and to the residents. I think that getting feedback from, I mean, I don't want, I mean, to poll a thousand people on one street. Sure, that's not feasible, I understand that. But I think that having some type of representation on the street when you're doing a major change, it doesn't have to bog anybody down, but they can just go out, ask a couple neighbors, look at it, have somebody from the Transportation Board actually drive that street, walk that street. And I don't mean at 10 o'clock when traffic is a little bit slower. Do it at 7:30 in the morning when people are going to work. Do it at 5:30 when people are coming home. And then do it again between 12 and 1:00 where it might, so you have a broad range. I think that you have to, people need to go out and see the road and actually drive it. There's times when a certain item is up on the agenda and I will go and I draw, and I drive it myself and I look at it to see what it's like. And I go at random times, sometimes I can go in the morning before work, sometimes I go afterwards. And you have to see that flow. And I think to reduce residents being shocked, for lack of a better word, is to actually have them be noticed sooner sometimes. And that, and that has been brought up in our previous meetings, that we'd like to get the news out sooner. And I know that Todd has time constraints, so I, I don't know how to, I can't answer that. Because I, if it was a magic thing for him to have more time to do that, sure. But I think that's really a hard issue there.
Okay.
How often do you use public transit?
I take it to work every day, I take the B line. Let me tell you, it took me, I go from Babcock to Park Street. It took me an hour and fifteen on Monday.
Now I see why I'm complaining.
I'm not sure why BU students need to walk two blocks to go to class, because I think they, they can walk there. And I had sisters and nephews that went there. But yeah, it was absolutely horrible.
What role do you see bicycle, bicycle lanes playing in, uh, advancing equity, especially with members of the public that have disabilities?
I think that when a street allows one, if we can, we should try. I, I don't know if each street can, I mean, sometimes we have to do a shallow. There's not enough width on a street. When you say for a bike lane for dis, for disability, do you mean somebody who might have an electric scooter that needs it?
Um, I'm thinking of a paral, uh, paralyzed person that might use a recumbent bike. I, I'm familiar with a few people that are legally blind and so they will never be permitted to obtain a driver's license. So in those cases, they are able to bike.
I mean, we should obviously, where we can put a, a bike lane, I think that we should try. Again, it's the, the structure of the town. I think that one of my neighbors, um, uses a wheelchair and he only, he only uses the sidewalks. I, I can't really picture a wheelchair running through a bike lane. I mean, some of them are, you, you have, you're there competing then with the bikes and other modes. I have seen personal e-scooters and skateboarders running through the bike lanes. So I think that's a little bit difficult. I think that's where we need to really allow them on the sidewalk. I mean, the wheelchair's obviously on the sidewalk.
Okay.
Mr. Franco.
Sure, um, you've had the benefit of hearing me ask the previous applicant, um, a, a version of this question. But is there some kind of change you'd like to see us make in terms of transportation in Brookline that you think might be difficult but is worth fighting for? And if you can tell us what might be, not anything where we're preempted by the state, obviously, but, eh, you know, what might be holding us back from doing that? Some, some significant change you'd like to see?
I think that, you mean, transportation for different type of roles, like the scooters or having people having their own personal scooters and bikes and everything. You know, that, that's difficult because I think that the Transportation Board tries the best that we can to make everybody, to accommodate everybody. We have bike lanes when we can, we do the bump outs to protect the pedestrians. So that's hard. I mean, I, I think that we look at everything. So really, I mean, sometimes, you know, we have to go back and, and, and look at a plan for an intersection. I mean, that's, that's going to happen. So to change everything in Brookline, I think that the Transportation Board has a very good representation across the board. You have Jonathan and Ali who are both engineers, so they have a varied perspective of that. I think that I am concerned about how people with disabilities get through town, the elderly. I know that when we have anything to do with a, a bike lane, that, you know, Jonathan and Ali are very good at looking at that and making suggestions. I think that it is somewhat of a class that's not being represented on the Transportation Board. And those are just truly a pedestrian that walks the town. We have people in the, you know, pedestrian advisory and they tell us, we're like, oh, that interception's bad. This one needs to be, you know, the light needs to be changed, you know, the timing of everything. But that's really, that's more like the engineer, the transportation engineer department to me. I think that if you have somebody who, I don't know, sixty-five, seventy-five, they're walking around town, they're, they're doing their thing. I think that's the class that we don't have on. It's because I see that, walking around Coolidge Corner, because I live around there, there's a lot of older people who are, are walking, going to Trader Joe's. And I see them and I'm watching them. And I don't think a lot of them do. I mean, I've been going to various meetings and I hear them say, well, you know, what about us walking around? You know, and, and then they say, well, you know, they put in a bike lane, they do this and they do that, but I just want to walk the street safely. And I'm like, yeah, you know, to myself, I'm like, yeah, they deserve that too. And I don't, you know, I thought about that.
Is there something we're doing wrong right now that is preventing, um, either, um, elders or people with disabilities from walking the street safely? What, what would you identify as those things?
Oh, I don't think that we're doing anything wrong with that, I just don't think that their concerns are heard enough.
Okay.
So, I, yeah, I, I think that.
Yeah. And I asked, I asked not to challenge, but to actually get some information about what we might be able to do better.
We, we have a pedestrian lighting committee that's addressing many of these issues, so.
I just have one follow-up question. So, um, I also live in Coolidge Corner. One of the most challenging intersections as a pedestrian is the corner of Longwood and Harvard, right by Trader Joe's. I believe that there was a proposal to narrow, uh, the crosswalk and do bump outs. Sorry?
Where.
Where Burgers is, yep.
That's actually being worked on, I was thinking that, yeah.
Yep, um, so you voted in favor of that?
Yeah, that was one of our options. It was under the complete streets and it was that intersection that we did. And part of that too is that we removed the right-hand turn. So if you're coming down Harvard Street from St. Rocha, that direction, you can no longer take that right-hand turn, so that is safer for the pedestrian.
Okay.
But I don't believe the sign is up yet, it hasn't been finished.
Great.
Okay.
Can I just quickly ask, it's, maybe it's a rhetorical question, but I asked Jonathan and I wanted to know, now that you had, you've confessed to your experiences on the B line, are there any things you think the Transportation Board can do to make the T service in Brookline better?
That I think will take a hundred years because I don't know how fast the MBJ will work. I'd like to see more trains on both lines, I, I mean, any of the green lines. I, I don't understand why it takes them so long personally, but I mean, I've taken the B line my entire life. And it, it's difficult. I, you know, working with the T, I know that they are improving the bus stops and they're, you know, they're putting benches for people and everything. But I don't think it's going to take a lot to have Brookline ask them to put more trains running through, I think. I, I mean, I have actually been stopping what I think are supervisors on Beacon Street because they're fixing all of the train tracks of the intersection and asking them to put up a fence at Charles Street. If you're on, if you're crossing Charles, Beacon from Charles Street, the crosswalk will literally take somebody who's visually impaired onto the train tracks. You actually have to take a left to go over to where the yellow stripes are, where it's flat. So I've been stopping them and asking them, I'm telling, I tell them who I am, I'm like, can you please look at it? It's not Brookline property, it, you know, it's that fight between the line. I'm like, all we need is six feet of fencing to guide somebody who's visually impaired towards the left so they don't fall in the tracks. I mean, that, I, I don't even know if that will ever be done. I know that Sarah Kaplan has emailed them and they haven't responded. I mean, something that simple to me, that could probably take years, I mean.
I understand your frustration.
Maybe Todd Corrane could write an official letter just to indicate that, you know, we take this very seriously. And that looks like a simple problem that, you know, needs to be fixed. So anyway, so we'll be voting at a later meeting. Thank you for your time and answering my questions.
Thank you.
So, uh, what I'd like to do is, since we're running a little late, after the discussion, or the interviews of the candidates for the Commission, I'd like to skip over the Electronic Communications Review Committee, sorry, Mr. Franco, the Park and Benefit District and the Cannabis Task Force and go directly into the warrant article, which is scheduled for seven o'clock. If no one has an objection, we'll, we'll do that after the, uh, Commission interviews. So Diversity, Inclusion and Community Relations, Malcolm Doldren will appear for an interview. So tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to be on the Commission.
Good evening. My name is Malcolm Doldren. I am newly caucus town meeting member here in Precinct Six. I live at eighty-three Harvard Street. Moved from Brooklyn, New York, uh, to Boston, actually, about in 2011. And my fiance and I now live here in Brookline for the last four years. And we chose Brookline for the same reason everyone else chooses it. Close proximity to our job, we both work at Boston University. The, the schools are fantastic, the walkable, uh, safe streets, the green spaces. We learned more about the representative town government. Both actually ran for town meeting back in 2018. We both lost. She lost by a lot less than I did. But in that experience, uh, talking to neighbors, business owners, going in and, and sitting and watching town meeting, it became very clear that the, the, the dream that people, uh, that draw people to Brookline and want to, to move here and start a life here, in reality, can't be attained by everyone. There are social, cultural, uh, economic disparities that are prevalent, just as prevalent here as a prevalent, uh, in other places in the country. And, uh, you can see it really clearly in town meeting where, uh, people of color are not represented. People under fifty are, are not represented. Immigrants, uh, there are underrepresented populations that deserve a seat at the table. So I think if Brookline truly wants to be, uh, progressive, that means progress for everyone. So I'm interested in joining CDSCR. You know, I hope to, to offer the committee, uh, perspective through my lens, uh, my personal experiences and add to the already productive conversations that are, that are happening.
Okay, any questions? Yes.
So if you feel comfortable, I see in the application that you have disclosed that you are an ADA eligible male.
Yes.
Have you considered the Transportation Board?
I, so I, I have not yet. I'm new to this whole thing and I think this would be, uh, the commission that I think I could most immediately make an impact on. I do bike, uh, I, neither of us own a car and so I, uh, commute by bicycle most of the time. So it's, um, you know, I do think that there is a, uh, there should be conversations between the different commissions that can kind of, uh, help add to those things. And I think that again, it's just a lens that I'm, I, I feel as though I'm able to, um, to give perspective from, so. Perhaps, I guess.
Thank you for answering my question.
No problem.
So, um, one of the issues that's going to come before town meeting,
Sure.
and will be before this board in the next session, or, you know, just a little while, is Warren Article twenty-four, um, that the Commission voted favorable action on. Are you familiar with that and what are your thoughts?
Uh, so Warren Article twenty-four is.
Which would give the Commission investigatory, uh, powers.
Investigatory, or, tap, tap, investig, excuse me, investigatory powers. I am familiar with it. I do, uh, I was at the meeting where the Commission voted favorable action with a, uh, kind of a clause of, hey, it needs to, uh, move forward by a certain deadline. I think it was 2021, uh, something to that extent. It's important for people to have a voice, it's important for people to feel as though they're listened to. That complaints, whether it's, uh, administrative complaints, uh, complaints from civil service, that it's important that people do feel as though they have a place to go to, to voice those concerns. And then, uh, feel as though those concerns were listened to and followed. Is the CDSCR a place where that should happen? I don't know. I think part of that is going to be, uh, decided by town meeting. But I do think that it's important to have, uh, some level of accountability throughout, um, throughout the, the town government. So how that works perhaps, you know, I don't, I, I do understand illegal ramifications of, of having a, a Warren Article pass such gravitas. But, um, perhaps one or two people on the Commission are charged with holding those investigatory powers and they are skilled in that, uh, that field. I am not one of those people. But, you know, I do think that there should be a channel that people can speak to.
I see in your application, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm saying, Mr. Franco.
Okay. I see in your application, you, um, you expressed that citizen engagement is one of the areas that you'd like to see the, the Commission work in, address. And, um, I think citizen engagement is the sort of hub that a lot of the very specific issues and conversations we have branch out from. So if you think of citizen engagement as the hub, the spokes are conversations about how do we make people more aware of what's happening in town? We just had a conversation with Cindy Lee about, uh, making sure that folks know about transportation improvements that may be happening. So what, just fill in a little bit of detail about what, uh, what you might want the Commission to look at in terms of citizen engagement and what are some of the improvements we might make as a community?
Yeah, I think if you, when I, when I think of, uh, DNI work, diversity inclusion work, I think of diversity meaning.
I think of diversity meaning everyone gets invited to the party. And inclusion means that, you know, we all get to play our couple favorite songs as well. You know, the problem that I see here is that a lot of the time, the party is closed door or you don't even get to know what the address is or any of that. So I do think that there is a, should be a way of bringing, whether it's town meeting or town issues, to the public, whether that's social media. I know that there's a Facebook page, which is kind of all over the place. But just finding ways to engage people, whether it's a meetup, hey, we're going to bring a group of people to, I don't know, engage at a barbecue or happy hour. I know there's no happy hour in Boston. But just to start these conversations. I think it's really important to have people feel comfortable. I don't think that you're going to have a lot of people want to come into this space in order to learn more. I think we have to bring town issues to the public. So whether it's social media, whether it's just face-to-face interactions, there are plenty of spaces in and around the town that I think are willing to host things and it's just finding people that want to have those conversations.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I'll just say a quick word. I mean, I know Ms. Doldren well and one of the things that I really appreciate, and I know that there are others that do this too, but is that you've taken the time to actually go to the commission meetings and sit there for sometimes hours and see the work that we do, the exciting parts and the very dull parts of it, too. And so I appreciate that you have a strong sense of what it would be like to be on there, having been to meetings, I think, for the past maybe two or three months at this point, like showing up at these meetings. So I highly encourage other people to do the same because ultimately, you know, it does take time to do that. But ultimately, if you're applying to be on one of these boards, committees or commissions, it's going to take time to do that, to be in those meetings. So do what Malcolm did, show up to these places and get a sense of what you're getting into before you do, before you start.
Any other questions? So we will be voting at a later meeting on the applicants to the commission. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Mr. Steve Ladizinski. Did I get that close enough?
Yes. Perfectly.
Wow. Put that in writing.
Good evening. My name's Steve Ladizinski. I'm a new resident of Brookline and the state, so I've only been here two months. I did attend the last commission meeting where that Warren Article was discussed. And the reason why I'm a candidate is because I want to get involved and engaged in the local life and there's no better time than soon. And I think that my personal background and my life experience in dealing with diverse populations is a, I think I have a lot to offer to the commission based on what I understand the commission does and I've seen their, you know, the bylaws, what their mission is and the issues that are, come before them. So I don't know if there's any particular questions that you want me to expand on from what I've said.
Yeah, I noticed that you're an administrative law judge in New York. So I'd like your perspective on Warren Article 24. From the standpoint of your experiences as an ALJ, what do you think and what are the pitfalls that people should be aware of?
I think it's a little different probably than Mr. Doldren, what, you know, what his position was on it. As an administrative law judge, you have two parties that come to resolve a dispute. Generally, there's an agency from the government and a respondent. And you're, you know, depending on how broad the law is and how much wiggle room there is, somebody's not going to be happy. There are certain, there are certain areas where there is wiggle room and obviously, I think that if the, you know, there's, if there's a way to resolve things outside of having one loser and one winner, then it's better. I think this commission is very different from an administrative body. It is, and it is a advocate. It's a body that involves itself in focusing on collaboration, advocacy, education. It doesn't have investigative powers, which takes it away from being a forum where disputes get resolved. That's the current, the current composure of the commission. So I believe that the way it's, doesn't have investigative powers right now is to remove itself from kind of a decision-making enforcement-type body. And it's, in a way, more of a, let's bring the parties together or raise awareness of what the problem is. Let's see if we can work things out somehow, educate the parties, engage the community in it. And my understanding of what the discussion was at the commission meeting was, the vote was, if the, they had a way of framing the vote so that a body with authority would take certain actions and investigate and come out with a resolution. Not exactly that the commission itself would do the investigation. That's not, the bylaws don't allow for that right now. So I don't know whether in the future the commission will remain as a non, as an independent advocate, educator and collaborator with the parties, which I think is the current, the current, the current function of the commission is to be kind of like a non-decision-making body that doesn't really decide disputes or get, you know, the investigation, investigating. You know, two parties that are in a dispute is, is kind of a little bit removed from what the commission does now. So I believe that their vote was to do something in a two-year time period if another decision-making body of the town doesn't do it. I believe that was the, is that, was that your resolution?
That's pretty accurate.
Yeah. So, you know, having been an administrative law judge, that was a very different function than the commission itself. And, you know, to be an administrative law judge, you have to have, you have to do investigations and come to a decision. One party may not be happy and you also have to have enforcement. So there's a lot of things that need to happen for you to actually be in a judicatory forum, which I don't believe the commission is right now. I don't, I don't believe that their function or role is right now. They don't have the powers to do it right now as is stated in the bylaws.
Many, many years.
So you said it doesn't have an adjudicatory function. I mean, wouldn't you see the bylaw as attempting to create that? At least as it's written.
The bylaw says that they don't have investigative powers, meaning that...
That's not the bylaw, it's the Warren Article, I'm sorry.
What I believe their decision was, what I understood their decision was, was to allow the town, given that its current bylaws don't give the commission authority to investigate in order to come to a determination and to make a decision with an agreed party in the town or with agreed parties, with an agreed party and a counterparty, that I believe what the commission stated was that they would have a two-year period so that the town does something in order to resolve matters. And if not, there may be in the future, I think it's a two-year period for people to resign. What I understood is some people said they weren't qualified to...
We'll have, we'll have the petition for that Warren Article up in just a little while. So don't necessarily go into...
That's what I understood.
Excruciating detail. Thank you, though.
Mr. Fernandez, do you...
Just to say, that's their recommendation. Ultimately, town meeting decides what's going to happen.
So I have gone to law school and I've been a practicing attorney. But when I was first in law school, I was in the Northeastern program where we changed internships every so often. And I was, at one point, assigned to the Boston Financial Commission, which was an investigatory body. And I was actually quite stunned at how complex investigatory work is. And I think that it, so I'm wondering whether you found that in your, in your work and whether you think that if we did adopt this bylaw, we would have to really overhaul the commission membership in order to obtain the kind of skills that we would need.
Possibly. I understand that one of the options that we're thinking about is maybe creating a subcommittee within the commission, a sub-commission. But investigatory, I take to mean you're gathering facts and evidence. So when you gather facts and evidence in order to weigh the evidence from one side against the other and determine, come to an outcome when you're applying the law. So you gather your facts, you apply the facts of the law and then based on what the law says, you come to a determination and then you have to have enforcement of that determination. So if there's no enforcement, it's what a lot of people call kangaroo court. So unless you have really some enforcement power to take some action, then there's really, other than gathering the evidence and making a recommendation to, you know, the town, the town commissions or boards that actually have the power to make a determination and gather evidence. I mean, you could, you know, you could, there are trial courts. You know, I'm using the word court, but they're fact gathering. And then in appellate, in appeals, the facts are already there. You kind of see if there was an error of law. So it could be broken down where there's a body that gathers evidence and hands it over to, to the, I guess, the decision-making, the adjudicatory body. So right now, what I understand is that the commission doesn't have investigatory powers under the bylaws, which means that they don't even start gathering all the evidence, so...
Any other questions?
Did I answer your question?
Well, I think what you're saying is the skill set isn't there currently and at least we don't, we don't know that it is and so we would have to...
I mean, the skill set means that you have to be able to analyze relevant facts. So you have to gather facts that are relevant to be able to, in an efficient way, be able to weigh those facts against whatever rules you have.
Well, doesn't it also mean that, you know, an investigator theoretically is a neutral kind of party? There's no advocacy involved on one side or the other because what you want to do is gather the facts as objectively as possible.
Correct. So in a way, maybe the commission, because they could still remain in the position of a neutral party, they could gather evidence if the bylaws were changed, I guess. Unless, unless that's not the role that, that you all want the commission to have, so...
We don't get to determine that. Town meeting gets to determine that. We will also make a recommendation, but town meeting decides. Can we talk about the commission as it is, though? By the way, like, hey, folks, get in the packet, see Stephen's resume here. I mean, if we do, if this did pass, we've got a good candidate to help us through this process. But let's take the commission as it is. You know, I am, you've been here what, a couple of months in the job? You got to tell me how you even found out about that. We have people that have been living here for much longer. It took me a while of living here before I even realized how this place worked and where I could try to find myself within the governance structure. I'm wondering how you even found out about the commission itself and what is drawing you to do this work? And talk a little bit more about, about how you see yourself contributing based on your knowledge of the commission.
So thank you first and I guess I'm proactive. My kids are in middle school and through a middle school newsletter, which I read, I saw a note and I contacted the chair of the commission and we spoke about it at length, about what the commission does and I gave her my background. I told her what I had done and she was pretty impressed. So she said, yeah, you have to apply because we could use you. So my background, I was, I've lived and worked in Latin America and the US for extended periods of time. I'm bilingual, bicultural. You know, I just love hearing about people's different experiences. You know, what fascinates me is the most, you know, the experience that I'm most unfamiliar with, I'm probably the most interested in. But in any event, so I've, throughout my volunteer legal career, I've worked for government for years, but when I didn't work for government, I did volunteer work with immigrant communities and I presented seminars. I taught about tax, I did tax clinics. I represented people in both tax cases and immigration cases. I was involved in my, I was in the school council recently for the last few years in New York. And I also led some initiatives, diversity initiatives that were very successful. So I feel that just because I'm new doesn't mean I can't contribute and contribute significantly because I've just kind of proven it to myself, so... And my daughter's school, my daughter's school in Lower Manhattan is, was about 60% Chinese-American. And I saw that a lot of the parents were not really involved in the school for various reasons. Some are socio-economic reasons because they work. But I did lead an initiative to hold a very large event that actually became the single most, the single largest fundraiser for the school, which was a Lunar New Year celebration. We had a very large amount of people coming and it also helped fundraise and it helped get them involved in the community, in the school community, so... I don't know if that answers your question.
It does indeed. Thank you.
By the way, the largest non-white group here in Brookline is East Asian residents and, you know, like in New York, there's not as much participation in civic affairs as we would like. So if you were to be on the commission, I'd hope that you used your background to reach out and encourage other members of the commission to do likewise. Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we're skipping over a few things to get to just a half an hour late. Warren Article 24, Mr. Conquest. Good evening.
Arthur Conquest, town meeting member, Precinct 6. For a long time, this Warren Article that I've filed has been on my mind. But I want to start off by reading something if that's okay. It's actually something that I had submitted to the moderator regarding an incident that occurred at the advisory committee. Tuesday, 17th of October, 2017, I attended an advisory committee meeting at Town Hall where Warren Article 20 about creating an Indigenous Peoples Committee was being reviewed. I sat in the back of the room. Second row of chairs behind the squared-off tables with the advisory committee members were seated. The chair of the committee was seated at the opposite end of the room, furthest away from myself and the other seven guests, 15 yards approximately from us. The meeting was called to order by... The meeting was called to order by the chair, and the first item taken up was Article 20, a resolution to support the establishment of the Indigenous Peoples' Day in Brookline. Two AC members in particular, who were sitting a couple of feet in front of us, of where the guest and I were seated, never came to order and chatted back and forth between themselves, disregarding the public seated directly behind them. I, along with the other guests, had to strain to hear the discussion in progress around the room. One of the guests, a Native American woman, finally leaned forward and politely, in my opinion, asked two of the white males if they could be quiet or hold their personal conversations down, so she could follow the discussion that was in progress. One of the men turned to her with a contorted scowl on his face and responded, and then concluded with, quote, "Shut up." I have to sadly say, many of the comments being made by too many of the white advisory committee members were blatantly ignorant and wholly insensitive, especially towards the two Native Americans sitting next to me, one of whom was an 18-year-old female, free male from Wellesley College, who was in tears. But also, some of the questions being asked by the advisory committee members involved Native American history, which the petitioners weren't able to answer. Finally, the Native American woman sitting next to me raised her hand, and the chair recognized her. She introduced herself and responded to the misinformation being presented. But the two AC members just wouldn't hold their chatter to a lower octave, and it was painfully difficult to follow the discussion taking place in the room, especially given the erroneous information continued to be spewed, even about American history, e.g. the African slave trade and its relationship to Christopher Columbus and his voyage to Hispaniola and sailing back to Spain in the late 1400s. Towards the conclusion of the meeting, the Native American woman was recognized, and a second time, by the chair, and she said to him that the two advisory committee members were harassing her and, quote, "during the whole, during the whole meeting." One of the two advisory committee members turned to the woman, and I thought, responded in a hostile, inappropriate, disrespectful voice, like he was interacting with a subhuman being. He was the culprit, not the Native American woman, from my perspective. Kaya Van De Zeele, a Town Meeting member from Precinct 16, who was one of the petitioners, discussed the incident with me and decided to bring it to the attention of the Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations Committee. Lloyd Gellenu, the director of Dicker, was sitting almost next to me when the aforementioned incident occurred. I attended the very next session of Dicker and expecting to present what I had witnessed. I also sent Sandy Gaspia a letter outlining what had happened. In short, I sat and waited for two hours, only to be told that time had run out and there wouldn't be a public comment period. But even more perplexing, Kaya, an appointed member of the Dicker Commission, reported the incident at the very beginning of the meeting, which fell on deaf ears. Bylaw 3.14 states that Dicker would establish, would be established to address and discuss the disease of racism and social injustice by supporting and welcoming, a welcoming environment that fostered cooperation, tolerance, respect among and all persons who come in contact with the town of Brookline, including residents, visitors, persons passing through the town, employees, employers, and job applicants, by advancing, promoting, and advocating for human and civil rights of all through education, awareness, outreach, and advocacy. Valuing diversity and inclusion in and for Brookline, for the Brookline community, Dicker's goal is to support a welcoming atmosphere. The authors of 3.14 define inclusion as actively pursuing goals of interconnecting, integrating, engaging, and welcoming into Brookline all persons who come in contact with the town regardless of their race, color, ethnicity, gender, and sexual orientation, gender identity or expressions, disability, age, religion, creed, ancestry, national origin, military or veteran status, genetic information, marital status, receipt of public benefits, including housing subsidies, or family status, making all of the aforementioned part of the town's protected class. Well, who's really being protected? And this type of inappropriate nonsense has occurred more than once, and Bylaw 3.12 has to be reexamined and changed so that it follows through on providing justice for all citizens in Brookline. And, and as I said, I have heard of other instances where people have gone to the Diversity Commission, or Dicker, and been rebuffed, ignored, or their complaints have, as you say in the Bylaw 3.12, the complainants have been told that they should take their complaints to the Massachusetts Commission on Discrimination. What are our responsibilities as a town for protecting the so-called protected class? Do we just say, go to the next window, which is the Mass Commission Against Discrimination? Or should we take a position and protect everybody in this community? That's the gist of why I've submitted, filed this, this Warren article.
So I assume that the Warren article is intended to cover more than just the type of rude behavior that you referred to?
Absolutely.
Okay. And why would it cover that type of behavior?
The rude beha-
As opposed to the current structure of the commission?
Because, once again, I think that to pass it on, to ignore it, or to ignore our citizens, I think is an injustice to them. I think we have to be responsible for our employees, our volunteers, to protect the dignity and worth of everybody in this community.
May, may I ask a question? So if you could describe for me how this Warren article directly addresses the situation that you just highlighted, say that Town Meeting passes this, how does that scenario play out now?
I think in most instances, it, well, at least as I outlined it here, you didn't.
Right. So say this passes, something like that were to happen again, now what does the, what does the path look like?
I would, I would expect for the commission to do some kind of investigation, okay? Let me just stop for just one second. If the individual agreed were to go to, go to the Mass Commission Against Discrimination, that's three years, two years, of just unnecessary wasted time. I think that, you know, maybe it's an apology, maybe it's getting the violators to understand that we're really committed to teaching or treating people, treating people, all people, equally, rather than just sweeping it under the rug and not addressing it at all, that we really mean business when we say that we are committed to the protected class. And again, this isn't the only one, but I've, and I've seen it before, where we just ignore it. People then feel, well, I can do anything that I want, and there's, there are no consequences. I have a, and I won't read it, but I have another incident that happened with me that I have to address downstairs with the advisory committee, where a person that worked for the town blatantly insulted me. Just, okay? And what was really offensive, and Mr. Kleckner knows this, because I, he was CC'd on it, is the response that I got from the person's supervisor is just totally asinine. No investigation was done, just, you know, well, Arthur Conquest is probably in the wrong place, you know, doing the wrong thing. Just not, not true.
Okay.
I'm still waiting for a response from the supervisor, or when I, another response, because I responded to him.
Can I, can I ask you, there's, so there is, there is, there's currently a process by which folks can go to the, the Office of Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations and lodge a complaint of, of this type. Is it, in your, in your mind, is that process not sufficient? And would this, would this replace that process? Is that, is that what we're trying to do here?
Right. I think that there would be some very specific guidelines in place that, as I say in my Warren article, the Dicker Commission would have to address it in, in a timely fashion, whether it's, you know, 90 days or whatever, and do the investigation, so that, that there's some resolution, whatever it may be.
Yeah. I just, I just wonder, so that's, that's, so the process exists, maybe it's about the efficiency of the process, how, I mean, I just wonder, I mean, my question here is whether or not this is the right role of the commission, since we already have a process in place by which people can actually lodge discrimination complaints through the, the Office of Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations. Is it, is what we really need to do just to make sure that we put some, I don't know, some finer stipulations on how quickly that process should take place? Because this is something very different. It's actually charging volunteers of the town to actually do work that we currently have paid staff doing.
However it happens, I don't, someone mentioned 10 minutes ago, something to the effect that there would be a subcommittee of the Dicker Commission, you know, a separate group to deal with this, with people who have the skills or whatever, or who think that they have the expertise to deal with this, but to just sort of pass it on.
So what, what is, let me ask you this direct question. What is your critique of the current process through the Office of Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations?
That there, that there, you can file a, is it a citizen's complaint? You can, you can file a citizen's complaint. But I thought that that was only in certain, in certain areas or in certain incidents that you could file it with the, is it the police department or whatever? Okay? I, I'm concerned about the fact, once again, that in, in this particular case that I outlined, nothing was done.
Sure.
Okay? And it's, it's not the only time that I've been to Dicker, to the Dicker Commission, okay, where they said, you know, they have their public comment, you guys have your public comment at the beginning of the session, when do they have theirs?
At the end?
At the end. Okay? So, once again, and I, it's happened to me twice. You sit for two hours, well, we can't, okay? So, and I want us to be, and I, I think that the, the bylaw should be reviewed, and it's supposed to be, I think it's 2019, is that correct?
Yes, haven't.
Oh, I didn't want to interrupt.
No, no, go ahead.
So we rely on a lot of volunteers to populate our boards and commissions. In the scenario that you described, what are some possible remedies should an investigation find that those volunteer members were in the wrong?
In the wrong and making a decision?
No, like, in the wrong, with their behavior. But because they're volunteers, I mean, do their names get sent to the select board or the moderator, that, you know, the group that appointed them to the, to their various boards and commissions? I, I'm not, I, I don't know how we would punish or kind of force volunteers to go to trainings, or, I, I'm trying to figure out what potential remedies would be.
Well, I think that that might change the qualifications, you know, that you're looking for. It might mean that a whole different type of individual would be applying for the Dicker Commission, someone that doesn't have those kinds of skills. But again, I also heard, you, you might want to have a separate, a subcommittee of the Dicker Commission that, that does have those skills.
That's not what your Warren article calls for, so...
No, it, no, it did not. No, it didn't. I hadn't thought that far. But to, but to ignore it, I think, is a travesty. I think that's, that's, you know, a disservice to the protected class.
So, you know, one of my concerns is that you're asking volunteers to do investigations and make reports.
On other volunteers.
On other volunteers. But also, you're putting them in a position of some liability, I mean, if they do an insufficient investigation in the view of one of the parties, and that can result in litigation. And these are not people who are indemnified by the town. So who pays their legal bills? I guess that's one question.
Let me throw back a question to you then, okay? Do you continue to allow citizens to be disrespected and, you know, wrongfully treated?
So, so there are two things here. Number one, complaints of discrimination, which, you know, we have a process, both the police complaint process or the current process whereby there's a report made and, and, you know, given to the select board. And, and if that's not sufficient, then MCAD is the appropriate remedy. The other type of complaints that you're talking about are just the usual rudeness that happens in life, right? And the commission should intervene to try to get people to mediate, you know, understand, you know, that, that certain behavior is not appropriate, et cetera. But the idea of investigating, making recommendations to the select board with respect to just rude behavior seems to me risky as well as not appropriate. There are other things I could say about it, but...
Okay. Again, look at it from the, I'm going to say, black, female, or look at it from the protected classes' point of view. Do you, do you want us to continue to be disrespected or treated, you know, in a, in a different way than, than all the other citizens are treated?
I'm not sure that, you know, that it's, it's the town's responsibility to, you know, enforce good behavior.
From your employees?
Well, from our employees is a different matter. This is much broader than that.
I'm not talking about all, I'm talking about your employees.
So with respect to the employees, there are other considerations, such as collective bargaining, bargaining agreements, the town policies and procedures, that, that do give people an opportunity to address, you know, bad behavior on the part of town employees. I'm not sure that, that commission is an appropriate or effective remedy for those types of, of complaints. I see Ms. Braga is behind you, behind you, you want to...
I'll, I'll let...
Okay.
But that's not what your bylaw is.
No, the bylaws give you, give us an opportunity to, you know, take down information and, and begin a process whereby we can resolve complaints of, of the nature of rudeness that you're talking about. And to the extent that there, there are significant situations of rudeness. I mean, someone gives me the stink eye, I mean, I'm not going to take that to the commission.
I wish it was just that.
Yeah.
Okay? I wish, I wish it was just that. But again, if, if you look at your bylaw, okay, it, it says that the, the, the commission is one part of their job. But, again, if you look at your bylaw, okay, it says that the commission is, one part of their job is to get respect and tolerance and cooperation from, for, you know, people from the protected class.
I just want, just to not let this go by before we hear from our HR director on this, but I will say, as the appointing body for our volunteer boards, committees and commissions, certainly we have a responsibility, no one else would, for intervening when there are complaints. I mean, I imagine the chair of that body would be the first point. But barring that, I mean, if there were serious concerns around discrimination, around decisions made or something like that, I would imagine that we would take that up and we would have some kind of remedy, including but not limited to removing a member who we think is acting in bad faith based on inappropriate decision-making relevant to a protected class. Right?
Maybe, yeah. I mean, subject to a whole lot of things, I think Ms. Braga is going to inform us.
Can I just make a comment here? First of all, I agree with you that no one should behave rudely. An employee should certainly not, and our volunteers certainly not. I don't think this is the way to attack the problem. And I'm concerned about the fact that investigations are complex things. They should be done by trained individuals. And I think it seems to me that the first person who should have been approached is the chair of the commissioner board and perhaps a written complaint about the rudeness. And, I mean, do we have any idea whether that happened and whether the chair talked to those people?
I did it myself. Not only did I file, I didn't, I described the incident, okay? I did. I have a written accounting of what happened and I sent it to a number of people. And in addition to that, one of the commission members raised it at a commission meeting or committee meeting, and nothing happened.
Well, it may be that we need a better procedure for dealing with that and for understanding how, you know, we ask our volunteers especially, because we should be having training for our employees, but in terms of customer service and in terms of treating everyone with dignity and respect. And we want our volunteers to do the same thing. I do recall on this board, and I'm going to be very general about this because I don't want to, you know, raise issues of privacy, but we have refused to reappoint a person on a board who engaged in some, in a very, very inappropriate behavior. So, you know, we have done that. And I do think that that's a better way, in terms of the problems you're talking about, that we need to communicate with those individuals who are being rude or whatever and discourteous or appear to be dismissive of people in a protected class, however you want to say it, and offer to have those people undergo some sort of training so that they will understand how their words are being taken. I think that's where we should be going with this, not an investigation. I think Heather has a point. What happens? You know, we just kick these people off the commission and say, you know, bye-bye? And, I mean, everyone has faults and what we need to do is try to correct the behaviors. We don't really, it's not like we can take a salary away or we can, in any way, the remedies are not really there. So, I, you know, I just don't see this as a good avenue for dealing with the problem. But I'll let Ms. Braga talk about her opinion.
And I would add, the concerns that you have with respect to rude people, the commission has plenty of tools to address that. Not by kicking someone off a board or something, but by bringing, as a matter of fact, we had an incident at town meeting recently where, you know, the allegation provoked a, you know, public outcry that, you know, helped to begin a conversation and effectuate some change. But, I mean, you know, the current commission has the means to do a lot of what you're trying to get at.
Let me just, Mr. Kluckner. I, or you were CC'd on an incident that happened with me on Election Day with Pat Ward. Not that it happened with Pat Ward, but it happened with one of the Wardens. I still, to this day, don't know the person's name. But I went to Pat Ward, I got no satisfaction, none, okay? And when he responded to my, to my complaint, I was shocked. Do you remember, you know what I'm talking about?
Yes, yes.
And I actually, in my next correspondence, said to him that I was insulted that he would respond to me in that way. And this is the kind of response that I think people from the protected class get, you know, from the town, when they bring up issues or complaints that have occurred. I'm insulted when I hear from the town clerk that I'm wrong, without really doing an investigation. If he'd come back to me and said, "Well, there's another point of view about what happened", I'd be more than willing to listen. Just dismiss me. This is my own personal issue. But it was totally wrong, the way it was handled.
Ms. Braga, can you give us your thoughts?
Sure. Just for the record, my name is Ann Braga. I'm the HR director for the town of Brookline. So, I am the person in charge of the office who does employee-related investigations. And that would be on any complaint regarding an employee that's brought, whether it's by a citizen or employee against employee. And I bring with that about 25 years of experience in doing employee investigations. And currently, we have a variety of those going on. And those are complex and take more than 10 to 20 hours on an average investigation. It involves a complex intersection of federal and state laws, regulations, labor and employment law, administrative law, as well as privacy protections and a complex legal landscape, including collective bargaining agreements. The Warren article that's before you in Warren Article 24, I think, looks to clarify what the process is, the timeframes, and to make the process more transparent. And I have offered to work with Mr. Conquest on being able to clarify the process in what exists already, to be able to do that, both on the DICR side as well as our HR process. But I think looking at having CDICR take on this responsibility in an open forum will open those folks up to liability as far as investigation and the quality of those things, open meeting law violations potentially, as well as a chilling effect on complainants. I respect greatly that Mr. Conquest can come in and make complaints freely. Many of the folks who come into us to make complaints will take a great deal of time before they're able to get up the courage to talk about what the issues are that they've been faced with. And I think ultimately, to be a welcoming environment in Brookline, we want them to also be welcoming for them to be able to voice their concerns and their experiences as well. And I think voicing those complaints or those concerns in a board environment as opposed to even an office where you're talking one-on-one around a roundtable with one other person is challenging enough. And I think that that would be a chilling effect on folks coming forward. It does involve a lot of training. The folks in our office that do do investigations are going to training at least two to three times a year, even if we have 20 years of background in doing the work, because the techniques and the law are changing on a regular basis. Things that we can look at, particularly for boards and commissions, include training that's already been discussed as far as respectful workplace as well as diversity and inclusion training, which DICR can offer, as well as developing a code of conduct for behavior for boards and commission members. And that it lays out specifically what the expectations are. And ultimately, if something comes through for a board and commission member, Heather, you're right, and that the only thing that the appointing authority could do is either remove them, center them, or ask them to go to additional training because they're not, they don't have a salary and those kind of things. But it is something that if there are more formal expectations that are laid out, then we could do that. Not that I don't have enough work to do, but I would if the CDICR does look at more formal complaints from the external side of things, would be looking to assist that group in their external reviews so that they don't get too far down the road in places where they could get themselves in trouble.
You mean, under the current bylaw structure?
Well, in the current bylaw structure, those kind of complaints would go to Lloyd in the office, unless they involve an employee. The Warren article does not exclude school employees, which is a direct violation of some specific school-related laws. I believe that was discussed at both CDICR and Advisory Committee. And so, there are those concerns within the language of the Warren article as it was written. And so, there are issues on that as well.
Can I ask, I feel like, I'm either, either I'm crazy or the rest of the world is, but it's probably me. I'm looking at policies that are on the Diversity Commission website dated 2016, just a few years ago, that indicates that we have a complaint screening committee, which is actually part of the Commission for Diversity Inclusion and Community Relations, made up of commissioners, and that people can make a complaint either to the chief diversity officer, the complaint screening committee itself, or, by the way, any member of the commission, including ex-official members, that then report the complaint to the committee itself for further action. It also indicates here that there's a process by which BP, the public schools of Brookline are included as part of this, and that the superintendent of schools needs to be notified, as well as the assistant superintendent of human resources and the school committee. So I just, I just feel like the Warren article that's before us is asking us to do something that we already have a process to do. Now, maybe this committee hasn't acted in a while. Maybe complaints aren't being brought to this particular committee because people don't even know it exists or that it's an outlet for them. But according to our own documents, this already exists here. And it does include schools as part of it. It does have a process, but it does mention, by the way, that these are not private hearings. And so, there are other processes. By the way, if you go to MCAD, that's not private either. Your name is actually published when you're essentially creating a lawsuit when you go to MCAD. But in any case, this seems to exist already. Have you, in your, or someone else in your office, engaged with either Lloyd? And by the way, I'm sure there's a good reason why the chief diversity officer isn't here for this or someone from the office, but it'd be really great if we had a representative from that office here right now. But have you all, as HR, engaged with the commission or the office in co-investigating complaints?
So, we've had a couple of interactions, to my knowledge, not active complaints since I've been here, and that's been since June, on employee-related issues. But those, under the practice that we have is, if it's employee-related, it comes directly to us on the HR side, just because of all of the things I mentioned at the beginning of my comments. But nothing, to my knowledge, on the external piece and the issues that Mr. Conquest discussed specifically. I believe that they came before I was here. And I'm not specifically aware of sort of how the, any sort of log or tracking is being done by the chief diversity officer at this time. I do go to the Employment Diversity Subcommittee meetings and try to go to the DICR meetings.
And I assume those regulations, since they have to be consistent with the bylaws, are basically setting out in more detail the procedures that are in the bylaws. So you don't have investigation of a complaint and preparation of written findings as the Warren article proposes. So, I mean, what we have now is basically a continuance, or not, is basically elaboration of the bylaw procedures, just, you know, filling in details of how things happen and I assume timelines, too.
Well, I, excuse me for interrupting. The bylaw moves it from gathering information and passing it on to someone to do investigations to having CDICR doing the investigation.
The Warren article does that.
Right, the Warren article would make that change.
That's the difference. And what I'm suggesting is that the way that the current bylaw is written and these regulations is the appropriate approach for the commission to take. And to expand it to do investigations and fact-finding creates such a huge liability risk as well as other problems, that, you know, we're really talking about two different things.
And I think most of the members at CDICR, when they voted, in principle, basically, that they wanted things more transparent in supporting the action, said that they would have to resign from the commission because they didn't feel they were qualified to do investigations.
That would be a smart thing to do.
This is, I think I said it last week or the week before, this is the second time I'm going to say, we've got a process here. I'll encourage you, Mr. Conquest, pull the Warren article and let us improve the process that currently exists here. There's, it does seem, and I encourage you to, if you haven't read through this, a lot of what you're asking to be done is here. I think the big change is what the chair said, is this, in fact, I mean, there is some findings that they make. It's maybe not a proper investigation or decision, but it does refer to the committee's findings, that the commission may reverse them, all these kinds of things. I'd encourage you to check this out because a lot of this is already laid out here. And maybe we can just improve this process, maybe we can promote it better, maybe we can steer people in the right direction, maybe we can make all of our different boards, committees and commissions and our town employees aware that this process exists so we can direct people to it. But it just seems like it's there already. It just needs to be a little bit better, maybe.
And wherever I can help, I'll happily do so.
Mr. Conquest.
I'll check it out, okay? And probably, if I can, I'll email you and make sure that you, because I'm not sure that I've read that in the bylaw itself, 3.14, or maybe it's an addendum or something to the bylaw.
Yeah, it's on the diversity office's website.
Okay, okay.
It's right down toward the bottom.
My main concern is that you or that everyone respect people as human beings, okay? Respect us, treat us as human beings. And that goes up and down the line. And when it doesn't happen, okay, that there should be some mechanism, okay, to let us voice our concerns about how we're being mistreated. All right, rather than simply sweeping it under the rug, which is what I think has happened.
So this is a public hearing. If there are any comments from the public, please step forward and give us your views. Any other questions or comments from the board?
We've referenced the conversation at the commission level a couple of times. And I feel like I've heard little bits of what the commission did, but can somebody just tie it all together for me? tie it all together for me? What was the, what's the recommendation of the Commission?
Sure. I think the Commission's, the ultimate decision of the Commission was this. I think that the idea that a lot of folks on the Commission felt like they, this was not what they signed up for, and that they were not prepared to do this kind of work should this pass, and what they ended up recommending essentially was this, is they said, "The town should be responsible for having a process like this," that it should exist. And basically, what they recommended was a provision by which, if it does not exist by, if this passes, the town has x, I think it's, maybe it was two years, to figure out a process to put into place. If it doesn't happen, then the Commission itself would take responsibility for it. And the ideal would be that, fingers crossed, the town will do it, because at least the current members of the Commission felt like this was not, just simply wasn't what they signed up for, and that they didn't have the capacity to actually play that role. But if it became clear that they would have to play that role, you know, a year and a half from now, whenever it is, that they would begin to recruit members that could actually do this kind of work.
Okay. So in addition, in the combined reports, there is the Commission's recommendation. And it's interesting, in light of what you found on the, on their website, is it says, "Although the CDICR recognizes these challenges, we also recognize that to vote 'no' action was to accept the town's insufficient method for dealing with citizen complaints." But they have a process for dealing with citizens' complaints. So I would recommend that this board vote 'no' action, but with urging the Commission to look carefully at its complaint process and make any appropriate changes, with the input from Mr. Conquest. I don't know what other people think about that, but...
I think that, I honestly, I think that's right, and, you know, I'll say again, I'd recommend, you know, in light of this information, which, by the way, did not come up in the Diversity Commission conversation, so this, what I brought up about what's already part of it, just simply did not come up as part of that conversation, so we didn't discuss this. But in light of all this, I really would recommend pulling the warrant article and working with our Chief Diversity Officer and the Commission on refining the process if need be, and actually even working to make it more robust, if that's what we want to do, but working with the current process, rather than what this bylaw seeks to do, is establish a separate process.
And to publicize the process. To the extent that those who are empowered to take action don't remember or don't know what it is, then how is somebody that wants to make a complaint supposed to know what the process is?
Can I just add one thing?
Sure.
And I, I'll accept what you say, Mr. Fernandez, and work towards that. Is it possible that it would include someone else other than myself that can work with the Commission to enhance the bylaw, or whatever it is that the Commission has on its website to address the issues that I'm raising? Do you understand?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay? I'm not, listen, I'm an educator, okay? I spent, you know, okay, I spent six years, okay, you know, in University of New Hampshire Graduate School of Education, rather than, I didn't go to UNH Law School, okay, or BU Law School. So, you know, the law is something in another universe, as far as I'm concerned.
So is someone in particular interested in?
I'll, I'll...
So why don't, I'll make the following motion. I move no action with the instruction to the Diversity Commission to review its own regulations and work with Mr. Conquest or his designee and Chief Diversity Officer to address some of the, or to tighten up the regulations to be more effective. Any other?
Is that effectively referral?
Yes.
Well, referral to, yeah, to the Diversity Commission, I guess, yeah. Do you want to use that language?
Maybe.
I mean, yeah.
Refer to the Diversity Commission.
It's clearer.
Okay, okay. So I move referral to the Diversity Commission to look at its regulations and work with Mr. Conquest or his designee and the Chief Diversity Officer to effectuate any improvements.
I would just include Ms. Braga in that conversation as well.
Okay. Okay, do you have that, Sarah? Okay, good. All in favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Ms. Fernandez?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Arthur.
All right, have a good evening, everybody.
You, too. Yep. Okay, boards and commissions, back to that. We're making appointments to the Electronic Communication Review Committee. Mr. Franco, do you have anything to enlighten us on? We're just voting on, I take it, six members, including yourself?
Yes, I think appoint six members. There's a slight change to the charge as well, which is to expand the number of members on this Commission from five to six, and to push the reporting deadline back to July of 2020 from the originally proposed March of 2020. The reporting deadline just wasn't viable at March, so give ourselves a little bit more breathing room. And the expansion of the roster is to allow us to appoint everybody who applied, to take all comers, so...
Great, okay. So, any questions?
I just want to make a comment. So I was looking at the list of folks that are on the list, and I know that four of them are very well-known to the town. Three of them were actually co-petitioners, it appears on this warrant article, and makes sense to have them on there. The fourth, Scott Inanian, who happens to be with us today, is, I mean, his...
He's always here.
His expertise in this area is legendary. And so I would just sort of encourage us, I don't think it's the sole responsibility of this select board member that is tasked for a particular committee, to recruit, but for us to fill out this committee with, to work to fill out this committee with new voices. I will say, one of them you do have on this list is Tracy Schroder, who is a huge get. She is the VP of IT at Boston University, oversees the Department of hundreds of staff, and I've gotten a chance to work with her over the years. She is phenomenal, and I am, I, good, great work getting her on this committee. She is going to be, I don't know that there's anyone that I'm aware of that knows more about, you know, IT in a complex organization than Tracy Schroder does. She's a huge get for us.
I think it's, I'm particularly pleased that she applied. I think she'll be particularly helpful in the context of emergency announcements, which is part of the charge of the Committee. I share your sentiment that the group that we're poised to appoint is made up of a lot of familiar faces and people who are deeply involved. I had hoped to expand the roster. I tried to recruit through postings on the TMMA listserv. That sparked a conversation on the TMMA listserv, which I hoped would have sparked some more applications. We see the results. I then reached out to folks by telephone. I tried to bring people out of the woodwork, and could I have done a better job, perhaps, but I did make an effort, and I think this should be a lesson to all of us, that it's not easy, and we've got to redouble our efforts.
And then it's a we, not any individual board member's responsibility, it's ours.
And I think it's also important to note that you achieved the goal of expanding the Committee beyond just the usual suspects by bringing in someone like Tracy Schroder. I mean, that is a slow process, but it's a process that goes forward when we make steps forward like this.
I want to be clear, I don't want to take credit for anybody applying. I think all that I tried to do was just spread the word far and wide, and people applied, and we've got a list of six individuals.
So we're spreading the word far and wide now, because, you know, at some point, people raised the issue of increasing the body of, or the pool of people that we bring into town committees and governance. So that, I think that's an important step forward. Any other questions?
I'll just add that there's no question about the names that we do have on this list are qualified to be on this Committee, is no question in my mind.
Okay, first of all, I move approval of the modification of the charge to increase the number of appointments to the Electronic Communication Review Committee. All in favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Ms. Fernandez?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. And secondly, I move approval of the appointment of the following members to the Electronic Communication Review Committee, Scott Inanian, John Doggett, Dennis Doherty, Neil Gordon, and Tracy Schroder, and of course, Mr. Franco, Ben Franco. All in favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Okay. Next, Parking Benefit District. We have a charge for that. Do you want to talk about that, Ms. Hamilton?
Yes, although it was not at our places, so I don't have the language.
I thought I...
I just have the charge for the Cannabis Advisory Committee.
What do you want to do?
I mean, I could talk...
We need to have the charge before we can vote on it. But why don't we just, you know, we're publicly announcing that this Committee will be set up, and people who are interested should submit their applications, and then maybe next week we'll have the charge and vote it?
Yeah, well, I mean...
And we can't very well vote it without having it.
Yes. I, so it was not at our places?
No.
No.
Okay, then, I guess, yeah, the charge for the Parking Benefit.
In the packet?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's in a revised, the revised packet that we're having.
So what do you want to do? What page is it on?
176 of the revised packet.
176.
This is not looking like my language.
Okay, I suggest that we take this up next week, you know, with the actual language, but we urge people to make application if they're interested in being on this Committee. We'll get it moving fairly soon.
Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry. Okay, it's just in a different format, but I think it is my language.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know who else would have submitted it.
Okay, so I'm happy to have the conversation now.
What do people want to do? We can just read it right now, it's fairly short, and then vote.
Just give me one second.
Okay. Yeah, I've seen this before.
Well, basically, it just says that they'll meet and discuss the issues, make recommendations to the Select Board, and the Select Board will have the decisions.
It's nine members, three-year staggered terms, all appointed by the Select Board, and it's individuals that represent the neighborhood, like residents or businesses that are affected, potentially affected.
But the point is, is that they don't necessarily...
They're advisory only.
They're advisory, they don't actually...
Set the parking.
Yeah.
All right, we do that. The only other question I would have is whether we want to include, in addition to commercial businesses, nonprofits. There are a couple nonprofits in this district. I think they have some of the same issues that commercial businesses have, but I don't know.
Like Puppet Showplace?
Yeah, yeah. And community foundations in the district?
Yeah.
Okay, so why don't we add that? So I move that we adopt the charge of the Parking Benefit District Advisory Board with the addition of including nonprofits in the district as members of said board. All in favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. So you're going to make the changes and get it to us, so, well, we don't need to sign it, but?
Yeah.
Posted. Okay, good.
And we're accepting applications.
Yes, I will start the recruitment process and try to reach far and wide.
We have to reach far and wide.
I will bug each and every one of you to send out to your own networks.
All right. Question of establishing a cannabis task force. Again, that was in a packet, right?
Yes.
Any questions about the, related to the charge?
I'm curious why we're putting a Select Board member on this group. I think it's, my vision of it was that it would be advisory to the board, in that it would really be sort of run by what I think we're calling the public representative.
What do other people think?
I think it's, I'm not volunteering, but I think it's a good idea, in that it helps the lines of communication between that Committee, and it could elucidate the discussions for this board to understand better. I have a query about why this is only considering and making recommendations on the expenditure of community impact funds, but I had understood that we were talking about establishing an advisory body that would assess the effectiveness of Brookline's marijuana bylaws and policies, given our recent experience with the sale of recreational marijuana and the impact on the neighborhoods. And it seems to me that there should, that this Committee, rather than having a second Committee to do that, I mean, a lot of the work could be similar, in that you're looking at parking and traffic and other enforcement issues related to the impact. It might, you know, I don't know why we wouldn't include that as part of the charge.
I think there's a standing committee that can take that on. I think the Select Board's Licensing Review Committee is the forum in which those types of conversations have taken place in the past. I think to mix the two overburdens a single committee, and I think...
I think then there should be an affirmative statement in here, because I don't think that's clear to the public. And I think that there are many people in the public who are very interested in this issue and want to understand it, and I don't think that, I think that this, you know, this could be confusing.
I don't disagree that that is confusing. I got a lot of calls over the past week when it was announced that I'd be working on this charge, and the feedback I got from a few folks who have been working on the Special Town Meeting III warrant articles regarding this topic. They, in my opinion, rightfully advocated that the bylaw and licensing be separated out, because this type of Committee is really only drawing from two very specific areas in town, and so you have a limited pool, and therefore limited skill sets. And so to try to expect them to also weigh in on the licensing and zoning and bylaws, I think is a little, it's a little unrealistic. So we should keep them separate, because you're drawing from a small pool already.
Yeah, I'd agree with that, too. I think having a nice, sharp focus for this, by the way, I'm reminded that probably about a month ago at a meeting, we had a conversation about participatory budgeting, which I think had a really bad rap at that meeting, did not really have its day, and this is literally exactly participatory budgeting. This is it. This is bringing community members together who are directly impacted by the presence of this one shop and potentially more to come, and having them have a say in how these funds should be spent, I think it's great, it's exactly... It's exactly what we should be doing, but I do think it should be limited to the community impact fees specifically.
Okay.
But I welcome language that would make it clear why we didn't include bylaw or licensing.
Yeah, and I fully support looking at, doing a look back about how we did and where there are areas for improvement in terms of the licensing and the regulation. I just don't think this is the group to do it. I do want to compliment select board member Hamilton, who I guess wrote this charge. I think that the structure to have representatives from the impacted communities that sort of cycle through on a regular basis is very well done. It provides accountability within the neighborhood, and it forces a direct contact year over year with what's going on. So, I haven't seen this done before. I think it was, it's really well done, and maybe it should be a model for other committees that we set up.
I'm a little confused that you haven't seen it elsewhere, because aren't all of our committees kind of set up where they have like three-year staggered terms?
But not each individual member is cycled through. So, this is a group that pulls from impacted areas, has three representatives from each impacted area, and not only do those three seats cycle on a three-year basis, but each individual's seat cycles on a different cycle. So, you've got one seat in every neighborhood coming up every year. And I haven't seen that additional layer of cycling through, which I think is a good practice for us.
I'll take that compliment.
Okay. Yes.
No, I just wanted to just point out, there's in the sort of second to last and third to last paragraphs, those two, I think they're just some wording that needs to be fixed here. The first, where it says, this is the third to last paragraph, "Voting members of the committee shall consist of," it does indicate that a select board members, it has an S, maybe just strike that, but a select board member, and what we're still calling the town's public representative, maybe we have a better title for that, but that they're indicated as voting members, but then the next paragraph says an additional voting member, and then it mentions the public representative, and it later mentions the select board member, but they've already been listed as voting members in the previous paragraph, so if we could just tighten that up a little bit, I think that'd be great.
Okay. You want to do that?
Yeah, I'll take that on. I think I was trying really hard to keep in mind that we needed a tie-breaking vote, and I might have gotten lost in my own language.
Okay. And the term "public representative," I suggested that instead of ombudsman.
I think it's an improvement on the first term.
We're in Brookline, you know, we don't want to use these gender-specific terms, but...
I think I had contemplated "community impact coordinator."
David.
But I can live with "town's public representative."
And shouldn't the public, or this person do more than just marijuana? I mean, this is a full-time position, I'm sure the pay is going to be fairly significant, and I'm not sure marijuana is going to take up full-time time.
I thought we were using the marijuana funds for this position, so they were...
Are we?
They were...
Oh, yes.
Yeah, so they're...
Okay, so they have to.
They have to only exclusively deal with...
Okay.
Yeah, I think there'll be plenty of work to do.
I do like "community impact," what was the last word?
"Community impact coordinator."
Yeah. I think "public representative" just sounds like something else that we may need to actually explain what that is, and it almost sounds like they're a legal counsel for the public or something like that. It just, it just read as really confusing to me. Also, ombudsman, I thought was their own name as well, so maybe, I don't know, "community impact..."
Coordinator.
Coordinator. I like better, personally.
Okay.
Okay. I'll make those changes.
I would, okay, so, given, you know, I can understand that you want to bifurcate the tasks here, but I would reference the fact that I would say something like, "The tasks of assessing the effectiveness of our bylaws and policies and the neighborhood impact of those shall be the responsibility of the Licensing Review Board," something to that effect.
Okay.
Somewhere in the language here, and I'm not, you know, I'm agnostic as to exactly where, but...
And just for anyone following along that doesn't have the document, you also included associate non-voting members of the committee, including fire, police, public health, schools, the Transportation Division of the Department of Public Works, the Sanitation Division of the Department of Public Works, and the Economic Development and Long-Term Planning Division of the Planning Department. So, it's community being brought together with representatives of the various town's department, town departments that, you know, are, have a role to play here, too. That's important.
Okay, we have all that? Ms. Hamilton?
I will incorporate...
Do you have all that? Okay.
Yeah. So, I suggest that we don't necessarily vote on this charge until I'm able to incorporate these changes.
Okay. I'd like us to announce its formation and urge people to...
Apply.
Apply to be on the board. Okay. Okay, so, moving on. Warrant articles. We're voting on the following warrant articles for the November 19 special town meeting. We've already covered Article 24, warrant article 17, resolution pertaining to open-air parking licenses. Mr. Ananian, do you want to say something about that?
Very briefly.
Yes, please.
I think you have the language in your packets, I hope. I had tried to incorporate the suggestions by Psychperson Fernandez and Heller. The moderator took some issue at the specificity. I was able to dial it back, and I think I've honored both of your requests in a way that the moderator will let me get away with. So, he's approved this language, and the select, the advisory committee actually has this on their agenda for reconsideration on Thursday, so I would hope that if you are happy with it and vote this, that they will concur with you on Thursday.
Okay, any questions or comments?
So, they're voting on Thursday?
That's, it's on their agenda, yeah.
Unfortunately, the moderator didn't see eye to eye in terms of adding the language that I'm interested in, and it makes it harder for me to support this, because I feel, I feel very strongly that I don't want a pilot program which allows anyone to come forward with a proposal to spend the town's money when that person or corporation could easily fund that pilot program, him or herself, or themselves. So, that's my issue, you know that, and I would think that it would be better to pull this and wait until we can get it more, you know, with that, with the idea that if we're going to have town funds involved, that they only go to people who are disadvantaged.
Well, ultimately, this is a committee that would be making recommendations to the psych board, so I certainly hope that they would make recommendations that you're comfortable with, and that's...
Well, but I don't want them to go down rabbit holes either.
Yeah, admittedly.
You know?
I would hope that your report on the article could express your strong opinion, and certainly as petitioner, I'm sympathetic, and as the moderator said, there's nothing that would prevent this committee from doing exactly as you suggest. I just can't make them do it.
But there's nothing to prevent it from doing the opposite, and I, you know, I, again, town resources are scarce. We don't help people opt up to 100%. We don't, you know, and I think, you know, if we're going to start going down that road, we need a policy about that, and I'm just not comfortable with it. I don't have a problem, as I've said to you, I don't have a problem mandating that when a person, when a holder of such a license for an open-air parking lot needs some renovation or whatever, that they be mandated to add an EV charging station. I think that's a reasonable way to go.
Yeah, if you notice, I did, I weakened the point, the language in number one, just say "consider." Select board member Fernandez had expressed the same thing, and so my intention was to allow the option that the committee would recommend no pilot program and just a mandatory requirement, which would be item number two there. I think, I, you know, I think it's worth a study, and I would certainly, you know, go with either of those. My intention here is to sort of push the process forward and get a study started so that we can take some action, because I think that it's important to take the first step, and we might find that we try a pilot program and it fails, or we try incentives and we just increase the scoff law rate, but we need to try something and then find out what works.
I'll just say quickly, I'm with you, Nancy. I have the same concerns as you. I don't, I don't know that we should be having an incentive program unless it's means-tested in some way, but I would just say, that's something that we can make clear if this, if the board votes favorable action on this, we can make that clear in the description, we can make that clear when a select board member speaks about it at town meeting, when we create the charge for it, if this passes, we can make this, that clear then, and should the committee come with a recommendation, we can make it clear at that point, and I don't know if we'll have three votes or not, but at least you and I will be here making it clear all along the way that there's at least a couple of us there that are not okay with that, as currently envisioned.
So, I share the concern, but I'm sort of with Raul. I think there's an opportunity to deal with it when the charge is created. This is more of a policy direction document than it is a specific, this is the details of what you're going to do. I've actually got a different concern, which is one I voiced before, is I think there's a little bit of apples and oranges in this, in this policy direction, as I've stated before. There's the creation of the pilot program, but then there's also, by the way, look at the open-air parking licensing process and figure out a way to make it more effective. And I think that's, both tasks are noble and worthy and should be done. I don't think it should be done by the same group. So, I would be more comfortable striking the last whereas clause and tasks two and three in the resolved clause.
Yeah, I think you mean the renumbered three and four, the last two? Reform the licensing process and...
So, I may not be looking at the right version.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, the relicensed three and four. I apologize. I'm looking at the wrong version.
My fault for renumbering them.
I'd support that, too.
Okay, read what you're referring to. Is it lack of a self-owned parking spot to make charging?
So, I would strike the whereas clause that reads, "The open-air parking licensing process administered by the select board," so on and so forth. And then I would strike in the next paragraph, the one that's resolved, the last, starting on the third to last line, "Three, to reform the licensing process to make it less burdensome, to comply with the law," so on and so forth. And number four, "To more effectively enforce licensing requirements."
Okay.
Let me make sure I've got this straight. Are we looking at the resolution that's amended by the Advisory Committee's Public Safety Subcommittee?
Yes.
Yeah, it should have 1031 on the top.
Pardon me?
It should have the date 1031 on the top.
This one.
Mine doesn't.
This one.
It was distributed.
Right here.
Oh, okay. Okay. All right, well, I see that you've added some wiggle room here, you know, some, you don't define some, but consider, you know...
I weakened, I was trying, I was trying to get under the moderator's van, so I was successful at that purpose.
Consider requiring EV as a condition of obtaining or renewing. Okay, so that's the mandate.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, number two, the newly added.
Yeah.
So, I am so in favor of this, but since I have a financial stake, I guess, being a garage orphan myself, and would have gone with an all-electric vehicle if I had had access to a charger, so I will most likely abstain from the vote.
Is there a reason to abstain?
I don't know. It feels like I've got a financial incentive.
It feels like she does, and she should. So, you're, what you're saying is take out number four, more effectively enforce licensing requirements, is that your concern?
My proposal would be to strike the fourth whereas clause, the one that begins, "Whereas the current open-air license and license process," so on and so forth. And then, in the next paragraph, the resolved paragraph, strike everything after the number three. So, the last sentence in that paragraph would be, "Obtaining or renewing some open-air parking licenses."
Period.
Period.
All right, I can see where that makes sense.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Are you in agreement with those changes?
Yeah, those changes, okay. I hadn't seen this before.
So, unless anyone has any questions or comments, I'd like to move a favorable action on warrant article 17.
As amended by Mr. Franco.
As amended by Mr. Franco. All in favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Abstain.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
And chair votes aye, even though, well...
Thank you very much.
Okay. I had a choice of getting an electric vehicle, but the battery life is such that financially it doesn't make sense to me. So, that's neither here nor there. Okay, moving on. Warrant article 21, amendment of a new general bylaw prohibiting new fossil fuel infrastructure in major construction.
So, I just handed to the town administrator the latest and greatest on article 21. These are changes that have been voted by the advisory committee, and the petitioners here to answer any questions that you might have.
There's a lot to read here, trying to figure it out. Maybe you could tell us what it says.
Sure. The petitioners have agreed with the Planning and Regulation Subcommittee of Advisory and the advisory committee on a single version of warrant article 21.
How nice.
Yeah. And so, it does contain some changes that were the product of a meeting of the minds. So, the more recent changes were an exemption of cooking, and...
Residential cooking?
Yep, all cooking.
So, I don't have to change my pots and pans in order to use...
You wouldn't have to change your pots and pans, you've got a regular electric range.
I'm sure you'll do it anyway, because it's the right thing to do, but no, we're not going to make you.
So, this includes residential cooking?
Yeah.
You caved on the cooking, all right.
Hope you got something good.
What else?
Let's see. There's an exemption for laboratories.
Okay, that makes sense. And that would include school laboratories?
Actually, it would not include school laboratories, to my knowledge, although the high school science teachers, when they first heard about warrant article 21, I had one of them email me to tell me this story. When they first heard about it, they actually thought it was crazy, which is a common reaction, but then they started looking into it, which is also common, and they discovered that, they had thought that Bunsen burners were an essential tool for a science laboratory at a school, and they had a science equipment consultant who also thought that there was no other option, and they did the research on their own, and they found electric Bunsen burners, and they canceled the gas lines to the high school science laboratories without talking... canceled the gas lines to the high school science laboratories without talking to me. And then at the end, they wrote me and they told me this story.
Yeah, I can confirm what Jesse is saying, because we did have a discussion about this at one of our high school meetings. And it, it turns out that, you know, we were able to cancel the gas lines, saving us some money. And in this particular budget of the high school, that's, that's an important thing. And also, you know, we don't have to, and the equipment itself was not any different in price, or significantly different. So it made a huge amount of sense.
As somebody who is actively petitioning for lowering the voting age, Bunsen burners were never my favorite thing to be around when I was 16.
To be clear, I think they still have Bunsen burners, they're just electric.
Yeah.
So they still have flames.
Well, they still have flames.
Electric hot, electric hotness, let's call it.
Okay.
Where is that in here? I don't, I don't see that change at all.
That is not part of the bylaw. That's something that the bylaw inspired the high school science teachers to do on their own.
Got it.
Yeah.
And then the 75 percent threshold, 50 to 75 percent, and then there's a, the three-part test for implementation, there's two additional changes, right?
Good point, good point. So we, we set a higher threshold for triggering this bylaw in one and two-family residential buildings, okay? We set it up to 75 percent of the floor area has to be work area to trigger the bylaw for one and two families. And we, and we kept it at 50 percent for all other buildings. And part of the reason is all other buildings fall under the commercial building code, so they already have to check a box to say whether they are a level three renovation. So we kept the same threshold they use now for whether they need to install sprinkler systems and other things. That threshold doesn't exist for one and two-family, so we used a different definition there. We also were concerned about the situation of a two-unit condo where one of them was bigger and decided to do a renovation, triggering the bylaw, whereas maybe the other unit would have difficulties or would be forced to do something in that situation. That was a concern of the, of the subcommittee. So yes, and then the effective date, we pushed back a little bit to January 1st, 2021. And it is, that, that effective date could get pushed back further if the attorney general takes a long time to review the bylaw and approve it. And then also, the effective date is now dependent on this board establishing the sustainable review board that is, that would serve for judgments on appeals and waivers. So that would have to be done by this board before this bylaw could take effect.
We're currently seeking applications.
So where is the exception for, I assume you're talking about commercial laboratories, or, I don't know, all commercial, but.
It's towards the bottom of section.
Number eight, I think.
Oh, okay. Okay, so our elementary schools would also, any new elementary schools, hope, 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 would be subject to this provision on Bunsen burners, for example. Okay. I'll take your word that that works.
Well, I would assume that they'll be subject to the same idea that they're be fossil fuel free, so that would mean no Bunsen burners except for electric.
Unless you have propane tanks running them, right?
Yeah, to be honest, I don't know what the plan was. Since the school was already planned to be all-electric, I think they didn't get down to the level of detail of deciding exactly how they would do that.
Yeah.
But they weren't going to do that anyway, they weren't going to use fossil fuels anyway, was my understanding.
Okay. Okay, any other questions?
Only that, just, you've been, you've been doing this for a few months now, trying to satisfy everyone's concerns and, and making concessions that, that I didn't necessarily even expect that you would. You know, I just think at this point, you know, if, if you don't vote in favor, not you all, but for town meeting members, if you don't vote in favor of this at this point, you're just really not for the spirit of the article at all. I mean, you've done all, you've done all the work to try to, to try to satisfy all the concerns out there, I think.
And as a co-petitioner, and I'm not the only one up here on, on the board, I really appreciate that you did make concessions to bring the advisory committee along. It just makes it so much easier for all of us to get behind it.
Thank you. Now, part of our goal is to build a very large tent of people who are ready for the next major steps that need to be taken. So that's part of our thinking behind this.
Well, I would also add that I think for a first effort, and it's really one of the few efforts around the country at this point, it's, it would be, you know, incredibly stupendous if we were able to get this passed. And we would think about picking off these other areas in the future and making them fossil fuel free as well. Obviously, technology changes, there will be ways in which these things can be accommodated without the use of fossil fuels in the future that we haven't even thought of, probably, so.
That's an important, yeah, go ahead.
No.
I was just going to say, that's an important point. Nothing is forever. This is a first start, and we'll be back in the future, I have no doubt, to iterate and improve. So thank you for your efforts.
Thanks again, and I want to mention one more time, this would not have been possible without the leadership of this board in, in setting a goal for Brookline's climate policy and in providing the staff expertise to work towards that goal, most notably through the hiring of Zoe Lin, the sustainability program administrator. But there are a lot of other staff members who have provided their expertise. And I really am very grateful to this board for enabling that process to occur. It's been an extraordinary sea change in how this town approaches climate, and that's why we were able to do this.
I'd also like to echo your comments about Zoe. I appreciate her role in this. And, you know, I look at things like this, not from the standpoint of the bubble here in Brookline, but from the standpoint of other places I've lived, like Nashville and Cleveland, where I did a lot of work in the Mahoning Valley. And, you know, we're trying not just to talk about and implement changes that would be relevant and understood by Brookline, because it's a bizarre, strange bubble. But rather, we want to be a model to how we implement changes like this throughout the country. And to the extent that we can show that we've gone through a process that actually included engaging people and balancing and, and working with different perspectives and interests, I think we're better situated to use this as an actual model that is relevant beyond, you know, our Brookline bubble. So I, I appreciate, you know, the work that you've done, and I appreciate, you know, the role that Zoe played in this process over a period of months to come to this point. And, you know, it's not perfect, but, you know, it's something that, you know, can be used, you know, here in Brookline, as well as, as be a real model for other communities throughout the country. So I move favorable action on the, on Warren Article 21 as amended by the, by the advisory committee, and chair votes aye. Thank you.
Fantastic.
Great, okay. Okay, resolution pertaining to an economic equity advancement fund. Mr. O'Neal, is Mr. O'Neal around? How are we going to do this?
We have, we have the.
We have the language.
The materials.
Okay. We had, we talked about this last meeting.
I'm just going to suggest that you take Neil Gordon out of turn, since he's going to go back downstairs to advisory.
Okay.
And then I can cover the, the next couple.
Great. Mr. Gordon.
Neil Gordon, presenting one town meeting member, member of the advisory committee. Mr. Gordon was my grandfather.
What'd I call you?
Mr. Gordon. That's quite fine, that's fine.
Okay, Neil.
That's good, too.
Is that what you're saying? Okay, go ahead.
All right, so just a short while ago, I completed my third, I believe, meeting with CTO NS, and we have agreement on a somewhat modified motion. I can give you those changes, they're fairly straightforward if you have the original Warren article in front of you. Starting with, start with 33?
Yep.
All right, if we're ready. So in 33, first of all, in the definitions, there's a Scrivener's error, that would be mine as the Scrivener. The paragraph D, the first reference to resident should be bold, underlined, that's a change from the existing bylaw.
Okay.
All right. Next, and this is the, the longest change, Article 3.12, Department of Planning Community Development, in paragraph 21, to facilitate and maximize meaningful input to town boards and officials. And then there is an insert that reads, "Beginning after officials. To the extent reasonably practical from residents and other interested parties," comma, and then, "including," and then they restore the civic associations and neighborhood organizations' language. The next similar change is Article 3.21, readily accessible electronic meeting notices. Towards the end of that paragraph, "To improve opportunities for broader and more meaningful," strike "public." So it's more meaningful participation, insert "by residents and other interested parties." And that would be the extent of the recommended changes by CTO NS in Article 33. That, as it currently stands, is the motion that I intend to move at town meeting.
All right. Any questions from the board? I'd like to move favorable action on the, on Warren Article 33 as amended by the changes from CTO S. On favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Ms. Fernandez?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. 34.
Article 34, some modest straightforward changes. The originally proposed change in Article 3.9, Brookline Commission for Women, CTO NS believes that there is a reason that the commission might want to reach outside of town for expertise, they recommend no change. And so that, in the Warren article, the reference Article 3.9 can be deleted for no change.
Do you have any idea what the Commission on Women, or the chair of that thinks of that change?
I know that Janice Kahn introduced an amendment at advisory, making the same argument that they would like flexibility to be able to have expertise from, that might not be available in town.
As voting members of?
Yes. There's similar change for similar purpose, Article 3.23, the Brookline Commission on Disability, for the same reason they would like to, the flexibility of having members that are not residents. And so the, that whole paragraph would be deleted from the motion. Article 4.9, election campaigns, there actually is no change there, and it's likely that by the time this particular Warren article gets to town meeting, which will be last, we'll go right from there to the New Year's Eve party, I suppose. So that language, where there is no change, I'm going to remove that from the motion. And then the last change is Article 6.8, naming public facilities, where the Warren article reads, "And so long as they remain residents," and "As long as they remain residents" is the recommended change. And I intend to move that Warren article also with the CTO S recommendations.
Okay, any questions?
Just based on these changes, are there, are there any circumstances, should this pass, in which citizenship is required for any, any board committee commission?
So the, the citizenship requirement for board committees and commissions in the bylaws now has been removed. There is still a requirement to be an appointed town meeting member on the advisory committee to be a citizen and voter, right, in order to be elected to town meeting. There's still a requirement to sit on the select board, that you be a citizen. That's not in the bylaw now. The current bylaw says, "Select board shall consist of five members," words to that effect. Doesn't actually specify. So the answer is, other than as required by law, there are none.
Right. Although AC, you can be an at-large member without having been a town meeting member.
You can be an at-large member without being a town meeting member. Currently, you need to be a voter, and as proposed, this change would reduce the at-large membership requirement to resident.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm thinking of people who are, thinking of individuals who are currently on town committees who are not citizens, but are residents, so you're excluding them from these positions?
The only, so any, anyone who's currently on a board committee or commission who is a resident would still be entitled to serve under these changes. If there are any members other than on Commission for Disability and the Commission for Women who are not residents, the bylaw change.
I'm thinking of someone who is not a citizen. And what do we mean by citizen? Is that citizen of the United States, citizen of Massachusetts, I don't know.
So CTO NS discussed this, and, not to speak for them, but the basis of the, basic discussion was, it's a broad term on the one hand, that might mean citizen of the United States, and a narrow term on the other hand, that means, could be construed as meaning a resident of the town of Brookline who is a citizen, as opposed to a, who is a citizen of the United States. So it's actually not clear currently what that word means.
Okay, and, and actually.
But, I'm sorry, but to, to answer your question, to the extent that there are non-citizen residents serving on boards, committees, or commissions in Brookline now, this bylaw would not change that.
Okay. But it would change it with respect to the advisory committee and.
It would broaden it. It would not exclude any current member.
Even if they're not a citizen?
There, there are no non-citizens on the advisory committee now.
I mean, in.
It's prospective.
This strikes all mention of citizens, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
I think one thing I did.
Go ahead.
Yeah, one thing I did hear in your response, though, and maybe this is something we can take up at another time, though, is, is currently, in order to be a town meeting member, and I don't know if this is related to Brookline bylaws or state, sort of municipal laws, you need to be a registered voter, i.e. be a citizen, in order to be a town meeting member, correct?
Correct.
And that's something, that means that there are many populations in Brookline that are not eligible to participate in our local democracy, and maybe that's something we can take up in some other way through, I don't know, it would either be through some kind of bylaw change or home rule petition if we needed to go to the state to do that. But that means immigrants, refugees, and others that live in the town, which is a significant population, aren't actually represented in town.
Or green card holders. Or green card holders.
Or green card holders, yeah.
About ten years ago, I think there was a town, a warrant that proposed to extend voting rights, home rule petition, very much like the lowering the voting age to sixteen for green card holders, and I believe it failed.
Go to the state.
But, yeah, something to revisit.
So it failed to come back from Beacon Hill.
Right, failed at the state level, not, not.
Oh, okay.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, I got it. I'd like to move favorable action on Warren Article thirty-four, as amended by CTO-S. On favor, Mr. Franco?
Osteen.
Ms. Heller.
Hello, Osteen.
Ms. Hamilton.
Aye.
Ms. Fernandez.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you very much.
For the deciding vote.
Okay.
Uh, one, one more.
Yep.
Yeah.
No, we're not.
That was just thirty-three, right?
Thirty-four, that was thirty-four.
Well, the vote, did you vote both of them together?
Yes, separately, you voted.
Okay.
Back to twenty-nine now.
Okay. Article twenty-nine, so after the board reviewed it last week, select board member Fernandez was asked to do some further revisions. We spoke a little bit about kind of the appropriation process and other models that are used for, you know, approvals, similar to CWG, like we had talked about last week. It's, it's a little harder to kind of define some of the projects, so it's a little, it's a little, the language is a little bit broader to kind of give us some flexibility. And I don't know if you want to add anything further about the changes?
No, I think that's right. You know, the, the key changes there, one, were to change it from creating a racial equity, equity advancement fund to support, the select board would support an appropriation for racial equity advancement, and then that key change, which was up to thirty-five percent, and that, that the commission also will work with the Diversity Office to jointly develop funding guidelines, and we did say recommend specific projects, which would be for approval by the select board.
So in terms of the appropriation language, are you comfortable with that, so, do you think it deals with all the issues that, you know, we're concerned with?
Well, I think without?
That's really the key.
Without understanding what the projects are, or what would actually be proposed, I think it's hard to say the mechanism that could be used to create this funding. So I think that the on-binding resolution is broad enough that if there's a directive from town meeting, we're going to have to engage with the DICR and town administrator and others on, you know, how, how we can practically implement town meeting's wishes.
Okay.
So let me ask a question, because I've thought about this article since we had our last discussion, and one of the things I was concerned about was, is the direction of this racial equity advancement focusing on providing grants to individuals? Or is it a broader issue of a program to assist people rather than individual grants? I'm not comfortable with the individual grant idea.
No, I don't think that that's what it's saying. It's specific projects, could be individual grants, could be other things, but more significantly, for approval by this board.
Okay.
So I mean, you know, we have to approve any.
I'm just announcing now that I'm not going to be thrilled with the idea of individual grants.
I think you and I are probably on the same page on that. Mr. O'Neil may think differently about that, but I think you and I are on the same page.
So my other concern?
And by the way, on, on that issue, I mean, individual grants could include, you know, we have to be careful here, but could include, for example, grants to cover permitting fees, you know, that may impede the development of a business. I think that's the type of grants that are being contemplated. But in any event, you know, we would have to approve them.
Yeah, I, I, again, I'm, I think, you know, I would rather see grants which provide training to people on how to establish a business and get a business going, and that kind of thing, rather than waiving fees, I don't, I don't love that.
Yeah, I think this is a case where, should this pass, the board will need to give direction to the commission, so that they're not creating a process that this board wouldn't support, so we need to give some direction.
So the other thing I worry about, actually, is the, you know, is the expectation that we will actually appropriate thirty-five percent of the revenue. And I got concerned about it after reading memos from some of the NEDA staff and legal people about, you know, if we are, if we end up being engaged in some litigation matters over some of the actions that are being taken, or being contemplated, you know, who is going to, how are we going to fund those things? And it seems to me that, that the option tax would be an appropriate mechanism for that. So I don't want to limit us to, and I understand up to means, but I think thirty-five percent creates an expectation, and I don't, I'm not keen on that.
Yeah.
Expectation. I think that we haven't had any discussion about any of the other varieties of ideas that have come forward in order to spend that money, you know. Is that, you know, are we going to spend fifty percent of it on schools? Or are we going to spend, you know, I just think we shouldn't be?
So I'll just remind the board, if you, if you don't mind for a minute, that we had during the override process a couple of years ago, we had said that in the third year of the override, that we anticipate that we would be able to raise two million dollars in non-tax revenue for the schools. So to the extent that this funding source is no longer available, because it's getting diverted towards this fund, there would be other ways that we would need to raise that, that shortfall. So whether it be from the trash fee, or whether it be from an increase in the meter rate, or whether it be from reductions to other departments as we go through our budget process.
Right.
So the, just so people are aware that, you know, that we've, we've joked about that this money's been spent three times over.
Yeah, yeah. I, I think it's five times over.
Well, so it's, it's a perspective problem as well. I mean, it's just a fact that the expenses of the town are growing faster than the two and a half levy that we're allowed to, the allowable two and a half levy increase year over year, which means there's just a structural deficit year over year. So to the extent that we carve off a million dollars a year, that puts pressure on the normal operating budget and defined revenue to fill normal cost increases. And to some extent, I feel like I'm being forced to choose between operating the town and providing police and fire in schools, and the very worthy expenditure of funds on diversity and inclusion expenses. So I, that's where, where my struggle comes. I, I also don't have a great sense of what I'm buying, and I appreciate the fact that I don't want to dive too great into the details at this early juncture. I think there's plenty of opportunity to scope things out, and to be specific with DICR and others about what we're looking to do. But when we're talking about transferring a million dollars a year potentially, that makes me concerned that there's this level of, of uncertainty. If it was maybe ten thousand dollars, or twenty thousand dollars, or make up a number, I may, might be a little bit more comfortable, but just the pure magnitude of funds is, it's a lot.
Yeah, I, I agree, but, you know, what it does is put some pressure on this board to make sure that we're careful about what projects we approve, and we're really focused on what type of direction we give to the commission in terms of, so, I mean, that doesn't necessarily solve the problem, but that, that's, that's, you know, what is our responsibility?
No, but I, I do think the number thirty-five percent creates an expectation.
Yeah, no, that, and, and I think we need to disavise people that.
And I, I, rather than saying a number, I would say to be funded by a reasonable appropriation of the revenue. And, you know, because they'll have to come to us with a package of projects, so we will have to sort through it at the time, but at least we won't have, there won't, we won't be, we won't be creating an idea that, oh, there's a million dollars.
It creates a false expectation.
What?
It creates, potentially creates a false expectation. The other point is, I am, as a practical matter, more comfortable budgeting towards known expenses than budgeting in the abstract, saying, here's a million dollars, figure out how to spend it, or here's five hundred thousand dollars, figure out how to spend it, whatever the, the number ends up being, rather than saying, here's fifteen different things we want to do. We've added together every, all the total costs, it totals fifty thousand dollars. Here's fifty thousand dollars, if you've got other needs, come back and talk to us about the specific expense and propose something, and we may or may not give you another five or ten or fifteen thousand dollars to enable that work to happen.
Okay, you know, we can, we can propose that, that change that Ms. Heller suggested, and vote on it.
Well, let me?
What do you think?
Let me, let me try something here. So I want, it may be that there's not three votes for this, anyway, but, but let's, let's try to get to three, shall we?
Before you do, I just want to let everyone know my thoughts.
Please.
I, I'm comfortable with the language as it is. I, I understand the concerns, and would I like us to use the community impact money as opposed to, you know, the straight-up tax revenue? Yes, probably. But I think we have a moral imperative to address, you know, the history that surrounds criminalization around drugs. And we really haven't addressed that in our licensing process. So I'm comfortable with using money that we are getting from these businesses to address the inequities that have been perpetuated, you know, through the war on drugs.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't the criminalization of illegal drugs having to do with, less with marijuana in terms of, in terms of racial minorities, but cocaine and heroin and, you know, the so-called harder drugs?
I think the history is that marijuana is just the convenient way to get people into the pipeline to jail, so. But I, I think that your concern about expectations is a valid concern, because in the, you know, our materials here seem to be a little jumbled up, but it looks like in the explanation or description, which should be in the description, it says, by this Warren article, the town of Brookline will ensure that the program always provide the necessary funds necessary to sustain the program. So I mean, that, that says that, you know, the Warren article, it, it has an expectation that, you know, a significant amount of money, thirty-five percent, you know, as it's currently written, would be set aside. So I think you're, in my opinion, your language is, is, would be justified, just, let's figure out what that language is.
Right.
See, I think we still need to, I mean, this, this to me, I mean, one of the things that, when Melissa and I were talking about this, this was earlier this week or last week, but about, about the TNC, which is the rideshare sort of fees, and that, that might be a good model for the kind of process that we go through, just thinking forward of, what is this process even going to look like? You remember, we voted on that a few weeks back, where, you know, the transportation administrator was involved with others in deciding what these projects would be, that the TNC funds, the rideshare funds would go to. So I, I would say, think of it in that way. The key here is, is what amount of money this is, and what percentage really it is. And there's the wrong number, and then the percentage. I do think that we need to provide, I think you're right, that thirty-five percent sets an expectation, but I do think we need to provide some expectation. So maybe it's that the board thinks that thirty-five is the wrong number, or there should be a different number, that's, that's maybe a conversation we should have, but I do think there needs to be some expectation. I can't just, I mean, you can imagine the community saying, yeah, the board voted to put some amount of money every year toward this, like, what else is new, right? I mean, that's just.
Well, you could say up to fifty thousand dollars, for instance.
Well, it could be a dollar amount, or it could be a percentage. I think, you know, I, you know, and I take the, I take the, the, sort of the comment that, like, this money's been spent five times over, well, the fact of the matter is, we don't know how much money it will be. And so I don't know how we're spending money, we're not even exactly sure what it's going to be. There are votes that are going to be taken at town meeting just two weeks from now, that would significantly impact how much money we're talking about anyway, which would also lead to some of the same changes, the impacts that we talked about in terms of gaps in school funding and things like that. So the, you know, I, I think we have to set that aside for the moment and start to think about, as Select Board Member Hamilton said, like, this is something that, that if we think it's important, we should, we should put some money aside for it. The question might just be, exactly how much do we, or do we feel comfortable putting aside?
And I, I'd like to thank Mr. Fernandez for working on this with Mr. O'Neil. I think it's a major concession that you incorporated up to thirty-five percent. The, the language up to allows this board flexibility, and it comes before the select board to approve the individual programs that are contemplated, so I personally am comfortable.
I'm, I'm, again, I, you know, I worry that the, I don't, so other people are going to come, well, why can't we have thirty-five percent, or, you know, why can't we have, you know, and I just, I think it's the wrong, it, it does, it sets up expectations that are, that are, and we don't know what the future is, as you've said, we don't know. I mean, maybe we'll only get, you know, a hundred thousand dollars out of this thing, anyway.
Well, this is why I think a percentage is important, not a wrong number.
Yes.
Because we have no clue what the pot is going to be.
Yeah.
So I think a percentage is important.
Okay, do you want to make a amendment?
Well, I suggested, nobody seemed to jump on the bandwagon. I suggested that we, that we say a reasonable amount, and that being the context of, how much are we going to have? If we're going to have, you know, a million dollars, it's a different story than if we're going to have a hundred thousand dollars, so. And we'll have to give guidance at that point. We can't give guidance now on something we don't know. And I would also, I, I think, I agree that Heather has a good point, that there should be a way for us to access the host community agreement funds as well in this, because I do think that if we're talking about trying to deal with the criminalization aspects, and if we find that those affect racial minorities to a significant degree, there's no reason that we couldn't use those host community agreement, host community funds for that purpose.
But that's a, that's a different issue, I mean, that, that, I mean, we should do that, you know, within the strict confines and maybe unreasonable confines of the Cannabis Control Commission, but we definitely need to, you know, look at that and figure out, you know, how we can both pressure the cannabis companies or stores to do what they're required to do under the regulations, as well as, you know, what things we can do with, with our funds that, that, you know, mitigate impact, and, you know, thinking of that concept fairly broadly, and maybe broader than the commission would allow, but.
Yeah, I mean, I would say that we're talking about appointing, and we haven't settled on a job title yet, but an individual to oversee the, the expenditure of those mitigation funds, there's nothing to prevent us from giving direction that some amount of those mitigation funds should be directed towards these types of activities. I will note that they, that the appropriate use is heavily restricted by, by if not state law, regulations of the Cannabis Control Commission, so.
That's my reading, too.
Yeah, we just need to be careful about, that we're using the funds for allowable purposes.
But we could, we could say in here that, you know, talking about the revenue from not only the local option tax. not only the local option tax on marijuana, but also the host community agreement, recognizing that the purpose must fall within the guidelines of, of the HCA.
I, I just think that that's a different issue than this warrant article.
I would expect that to be challenged immediately.
So, it can, why don't we, I, I would move that we vote favorable, favorable action on the warrant article, but with the board's statement that, you know, we will be reviewing the guidelines for programs very carefully, and any programs or projects that are proposed within the context of our overall budgetary needs, or something like that. Would that, so that we make clear that this...
Instead of a 35% number.
Well, no, include the 35% number, but say that...
See, that's what I, I'm really uncomfortable with, the 35% number.
Well, let's vote and see where we are.
Okay.
So, I'm going to vote no, but I'm going to attach this sort of asterisk to that no vote, and say, I'm supportive of the concept here, I'm just uncomfortable with the, the form the commitment's taking. I am open to spending these dollars on these types of activities, I'm just uncomfortable with the particular language of this resolution.
Okay, so, I will move favorable action on the warrant article 29, as revised by Fernandez and, and the petitioner. Mr. Franco, on favor, Mr. Franco?
No.
Ms. Heller?
No.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
And Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Oh, God, now, I have to decide. I'm going to vote aye. But I think the message needs to be conveyed, that the Select Board, you know, Mr. Franco's concerns, and that the Select Board will take very seriously its responsibility to, to review the guidelines that come from the commission, to make sure that they are reasonable, as well as review specific projects within the context of our overall budgetary concerns. I don't, I don't know who's going to write that up, but...
We're looking at you, Melissa.
Yeah, I mean, that, that, that's so-called legislative history, you know, certainly, I mean, we're not the legislature, but it's, it's, you know, the executive branch's view of how this will be implemented, and, and we expect town meeting to not object, I guess. Okay. Next. 90-day license renewal discussion. I just wanted to give members of the board an opportunity to express their views after our hearing on NEDA's 90-day review. You know, we're coming up in a month on our renewal of the two licenses that we've issued, so it's probably good to just think through, in this public setting, because we can't do it behind closed doors, you know, what are our views in terms of, you know, what we should be looking at in terms of license conditions and other things. So, let's see. I actually wrote something in one of these days. So... So, before we give our views, I'd like the police department, I saw Officer, is it Hayes?
Yeah, I know they're downstairs.
Okay, I'd actually like them to respond to some of the statements that have been made about police enforcement, and, you know, their, you know, the data that they have collected in terms of incidents around the NEDA facility, so that we have some, you know, on-the-record information along those lines, so. But anyway, I guess I can start off, unless someone else wants to start off. You know, my views on this, you know, I am in substantial agreement with some of NEDA's views on this issue, that is, that many, but not all, of the problems that we're looking at in Brookline Village can be addressed by use of the community impact fees, and we should, and we are, using those fees for that purpose. I also agree with them that not all problems are caused by NEDA, you know, you know, there 'd be multiple private and public construction projects. There's also the Brighton Municipal Court's civil and criminal docket in our courthouse, and, temporarily. And remember, the path from the courthouse to public transportation goes through Brookline Village. So, before we jump on NEDA as a cause of all of our problems, think about, you know, this huge new body of, of individuals who are in our town, and may or may not be, you know, the cause of some of the issues that have been raised. And also, you know, Brookline Village is, is becoming more vibrant, and that, you know, creates problems that, you know, are sometimes attributed to NEDA, unjustly, in my opinion. But in addition, you know, there's more to it than that. We need robust, but I emphasize, not heavy-handed enforcement of traffic and parking rules by the town, and we're doing that. And I hope it doesn't become heavy-handed, because that will be, will create many problems. I also believe that when you, when we review the renewal of the license for both NEDA and Sanctuary, that we should set an earlier closing time for both of them, with the possible exception of Friday and Saturday, and also set additional days during the years when the store, stores are closed. I'm hoping that NEDA and Sanctuary recognize the wisdom of voluntarily, voluntarily agreeing to such an adjustment, but, you know, that's my position, and it's out there, and hopefully, you know, they'll respond appropriately. I, I think that we also need to address issues of operational and design features of stores, including the new Sanctuary store, that prevent, to the extent possible, on public sidewalks, of hewing outside the building in which they operate. I understand that Sanctuary thinks that they can prevent that, and NEDA, of course, has claimed that within a short period of time, they will eliminate all of their lines outside of their building. Finally, we've set up the Cannabis Advisory Committee tonight, which, with the public representatives that we plan to hire, will help in addressing problems in advance of them becoming a so-called crisis situation in some residents' minds. I also want to say, for the record, that I will continue to speak out against what I consider racially tinged messaging from some of the complainants in the Brookline Village, Coolidge Corner, and St. Mary's neighborhoods. We must welcome to the, be welcoming to the outsider, because, to quote a famous book, we have all been outsiders in our past, whether they are immigrants and refugees from Central America, or Syria, or NEDA customers from Mission Hill. I know we've gotten some flak from, from making statements like this, but I think it's very important, and I will continue to, to speak out where the messaging that I hear from the community is setting us up to be seen as unwelcoming to people from outside of Brookline, particularly people of color. We've had problems like this in the past, and we don't want to repeat them, so. So, that's my thought, I don't know if anyone else wants to add their, their thinking, their thoughts, their views?
I'm happy to, to speak, to go next. So, I, I agree with you on the point that I don't think NEDA is responsible for all the conflicts we've seen in Brookline Village. I think, there's a lot of construction going on, there are new folks there, and the work at the former Duncan Donut site, at the corner of High Street and Boylston Street, has to have some role in this. You know, there's a tremendous amount of construction on Pearl Street over the summer, that's got to have some role in this, but NEDA has a role to play here. And I think there are a number of things that need to happen. I think you are absolutely right, that the town needs to work on providing a structure for mitigation payment, the allocation of mitigation funds to go through. And I think we've set up a committee tonight, I think we've talked about hiring a staff member with some yet-to-be-determined title, to sort of work on this day, day after day, and be the point person. I think this expenditure of the, the funds and how they're expended matters. But again, I do think that NEDA's got a role to play in this. And I have to admit, I'm a little bit upset with NEDA this evening. We got a, a lawyer's letter from the council, saying that town meeting can't act on this. And what I took away from the hearing now, two weeks ago, was that NEDA was a partner in this, and this lawyer's letter does not read to me as the way a partner acts. It's a, it's a threat to the town, that if you do something, we are going to jam you up in court, and that's not, that's not the way partnerships exist. I think that we're beyond the, the point of voluntary agreement to, to close earlier. I think this board has got the power to do it, I think we do it next week, and we let town meeting act, and after we've seen true partnership from NEDA, and a demonstration that the situation has ameliorated, we can go back and expand hours again, but something needs to happen, and I stand ready to do it next week.
Okay, on what authority would you do that next week?
Well, I think the, the special permission by the Zoning Board of Appeals gives us the power to do it, I think the general bylaw gives us the power to do it, the zoning bylaw gives us the power to do it. I think we've got plenty of legal justification.
Okay, I, I would want to get clear guidance from town council before we do something like that, especially given the fact that their license renewal is coming up within weeks.
Well, I think that town council can be invited next week to give us that, that guidance. I think that we should also hear from the police department and the director of engineering about their experience as required by Condition 6 of the Zoning Board of Appeals decision.
Speaking of town council, I have asked for a definition of, you know, what the data needs to be in order for us to figure out whether we can amend the license. I have yet to really receive any guidance as to what that data might look like. So, we've had a number of hearings, and we have a lot of people contacting us, and I still don't exactly know what my framework needs to be in order to evaluate whether I have the authority to implement some of the changes that have been suggested. That aside, I have gone over the traffic study that Tetra Tech did, and they mentioned the original StanTech traffic study that was done prior to the opening, and I'm disturbed that StanTech grossly underestimated how many trips were going to be coming through NEDA. We're finding about 300 transactions an hour, and I'm not completely confident that Tetra Tech, like, what methodology they used in order to verify that people were walking into NEDA, that they came on foot versus parking around the corner. So, I think, I think that they might have discounted how many people were driving, because you might not see them park in a different location, you might think that they came by public transit or on foot. So, I am very concerned about the traffic and the volume. I don't know what to do about that yet, but, you know, having, having numbers that were unrealistically low at the beginning did not help the situation for us to evaluate the hours of operation.
Well, you know, I was concerned when NEDA was first doing the medical marijuana, and they said, you know, I pushed for appointment-only, and pushed, there was pushback from NEDA, no, we don't need that, we can manage it just fine, and blah, 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 and they turned out to be right, they could manage it. And if you ask people who say that they're impacted now, they will say, this, the impact problems didn't start in any significant way until the recreational marijuana came, you know, opened its doors. I would ask you how long the Brighton Court has been coming to Brookline, and was that before the date of the medic, of the recreational opening, or not?
Do you know when?
I believe it was.
I don't, I don't recall.
And...
Was, was it before the opening of?
Of the recreational. We didn't have these complaints then, and I think that, and we've had the construction as well, significant, you know, some of it's, some of it's gone away, some of it's increased, but we've had these, this very significant construction activity in that neighborhood for months and months and months, well beyond the opening of the recreational. So, I don't think that citing those things, you know, I agree with Mr. Franco, that while it's not, NEDA's not the only one, it certainly has come on the heels of all these other things, and overloaded the neighborhood in significant ways. And unless we're going to stop all the construction and say, go away, and let, allow NEDA to continue, I'm not even sure that that'll fix the problem. But I think that... I think we have to listen to what the residents are telling us, and I don't think, I mean, sure, are some of them motivated by, you know, ideas that we find repulsive? Probably, but not, I don't think most of them are. I, I think most, they didn't complain when it was medical, and so, I don't think they're complaining, you know, and, and people were coming from Boston, and they were coming from Lynn, and they were coming from Revere, and they were coming from all over, when it was medical. It's not as if they were coming just from Brookline. I think it's the sheer numbers that we're dealing with here, and those impacts are significant. And I think we definitely, I, I would continue to push for some sort of appointment-only system. We see that in Newton, they've implemented that, and it's worked perfectly fine, they haven't had the problems we had, and we, you know, we tried to learn from Lemonster, was it Lemonster?
Leister.
Oh, Leister, sorry.
Oh, no, I think you might be right, maybe it was.
Lester.
Lester.
Oh, Lester, okay.
The New England pronunciation of these things is sometimes weird. And I think, you know, we did in the very first days, but we've, we haven't learned, we, we were the first to do this, not by appointment, and let anybody come whenever they wanted, and now we're seeing the results of that. And I think that Newton has taken a page from, has learned from us, in, in a way, and done the opposite, and it's apparently worked out much better. So, we need to do something to ameliorate the problems, and it's always difficult to figure out what, but I believe that we can, if we impose some sort of reserve ahead or appointment-only system, and cut back the hours, that will be a first step. If we find that that doesn't work, and we can look at it and figure, I, I don't think we'll know any other way, unless we do it. We're not going to know, and it's not, to me, it doesn't seem tolerable to allow it to continue without taking some action.
All the way in here. You know, I think the time for this board to take action was before 877, you know, residents filed a petition that created a special town meeting, which will take place in two weeks. You know, at, at this point, if it is, if it is likely that, that this town will be sued as a result of start, of, of attempting to change the hours, maybe do a reserve ahead or appointment-only, I'd like, I'd like to fight that fight, knowing that there are a majority of town meeting members who also are encouraging us to fight that fight, and we won't know that until two weeks from now. You know, at this point, right now, this would be five members of, of our community making a decision that would, I mean, frankly, it, it wouldn't even preempt the decision by town meeting, because this decision by town meeting will override whatever decision it is that we make, should we vote next week, or, and, and whatever recommendations we make, I imagine, next week on the, those articles before us. So, you know, I, I think it's important for us to share how we feel about this, and provide our recommendation to town meeting, as we, as we will for other warrant articles, but I, I don't see, I don't see the sense in us making a decision on this. But I don't see, I don't see the sense in us making a decision on this, knowing that this is going to lead to this kind of fight without having the backing of town meeting in doing so.
I'm not suggesting we make any decisions.
Well, to be clear, I am suggesting that we take action next week. I think this community has waited long enough. I agree with select person Fernandez, that the time for us to act was weeks ago.
But we didn't.
But we didn't. And I'm more focused on the future and what we're going to do to provide relief. I think the time to act is now and our action does not prevent town meeting from weighing in. And let's, let's try and fix the situation and make, improve the quality of life for folks on Walnut Street, White Place and in general Brookline Village.
In my view, we are fixing the situation. And, you know, rash actions before we really, or before time to make the change to the license conditions, I think is not a good idea. But anyway, Lieutenant, Lieutenant, sorry, Lieutenant Hayes. Don't want to demote you.
As long as my paycheck keeps saying.
So I guess the question is, you know, the, the police, the police report at the meeting we had, or the hearing we had for NEDA's extended hours review was questioned in terms of, you know, whether the police are at an incident quick enough to really know, you know, what's going on in the community. You know, what are your thoughts? And maybe, you know, sort of restate what, you know, your data has found with respect to enforcement issues.
Okay, so just to kind of give you an idea of the volume we do, if you're aware, we do about 80,000 calls for service every year, which is an incredible, incredible amount of data to go through and process for data gathering. But what I can tell you is our Part A crimes, a summary of it would be our Part A crimes have not changed when compared to a five-year average. They're actually a little bit less than what they were compared to that five-year average.
Examples include?
Part A crimes are your major crimes, robberies, rapes, larcenies, burglaries, motor vehicle theft, like your hardcore true crime. So that, that hasn't changed. That's not, that's nothing that's changed. Our nuisance calls, stuff like public consumption, parking violations, that is measurable difference there. We're receiving more calls. We're not showing a lot of, we're doing a ton of enforcement, but because based on the way calls come into the station and the time it takes to dispatch and get a car there, you know, these offenses are all transient in nature in that, you know, somebody's walking down the street publicly consuming, or they're parking in front of somebody's driveway, blocking the driveway. And by the time the call gets into our CAD, our CAD then prioritizes all of our calls and a unit is sent based on this priority. Most of the time, many times, most of the time, I'll say, you know, we have a car available immediately to respond, but depending on where in the town they are, it could be 30 seconds to respond, could be several minutes based on traffic and where they are. And so the vast majority of these times that we're getting calls for public consumption or parking complaints or other nuisance type issues, these people, it's gone by the time, they're gone by the time we get there. Or if the person is not gone, we're not observing the violation and we, you know, we can't take action when we don't, when we don't observe it. You know, we drive police cars, you know, big SUVs with Brookline Police on it makes it difficult, you know, to, you know, sneak up on somebody, you know? As far as, I mean, I can go over what we've been, we've been put a lot of resources into the, into this neighborhood. We assign a Brookline Village officer Monday through Friday, it's kind of a summary of what you heard a couple of weeks ago during the day. We have a full-time parking control officer assigned there. We've, we have undercover officers have been assigned to do surveillance in the area in response to reports of a secondary drug market. We've had bike officers using the impact funds going down there. They've been down about 15 times, 12 to 15 times they've been down there.
Per week?
No, in total, the last like two weeks.
Okay.
Since May, we have officers who are assigned in adjacent sectors, go down there and give the area special attention. Documented well over, well over 400 instances where we're giving special attention to the area in addition to regular service calls and traffic enforcement, parking enforcement. And the vast majority of those entries show that there's no violations found. There have been, and when there is a violation found, it's typically a parking violation or a moving violation. There's been, there have been two instances where people have been cited for public consumption based on that enforcement.
But, excuse me, but I don't think you're saying that it doesn't exist. What you're saying is it's not there when you, when you get there. However much time has passed between, and the caller may not have called the second they spotted the car, the second they...
Today, we had a call at about 3:22. We were there about, within two minutes of the call and the, I think the detail officer is the one that actually saw the person. They were there, but they weren't doing anything. You know, they weren't committing the violation of, you know, the public consumption violation, so we can't cite them.
Can I ask you this? And I'm not looking for a specific answer, so whatever the answer is, it is. Have we, since we released the sort of the, you know, the mitigation funds and actually put into place some new enforcement in that area, have we, have we seen any kind of decrease in like calls or anything like that? Or is it just too soon to tell?
I think it's too soon to tell. The, I think the short answer is that, you know, the data that we have goes from May 1st through September 30th. So we don't really have anything from September 30th on.
Which is after we started, we changed our strategy.
Correct. But I'm not sure, you know, again, you have these, the same issue of people see a police officer coming, they're not going to start publicly consuming marijuana.
So when you say you have an officer assigned to Brookline Village?
Yep.
Just explain to me what that means. Like, is it a patrol car? Do they just drive around? Like, how far is that? What are the borders of the sector?
So they, so they're all throughout, say, the Brookline Village area that we're talking about here, they probably don't venture much into Walnut Street. You know, they're kind of, you know, in that immediate area of NEDA and Station Street and up by the Starbucks as far as that goes.
Okay.
And they're on foot, they're in a car.
Just one officer?
Yeah, one officer. So what they do is in the morning, they do a school traffic post. And then in the afternoon, they do a school traffic post. And then they're in the Brookline Village area for the rest of the day. And they're also responsible for calls that come in.
Yeah.
You know, servicing calls and conducting their own parking enforcement.
And that's, that's the way it would have been if NEDA did not exist, but because...
Yes, that's been like this for several years now.
Okay. And then because NEDA exists and we're getting mitigation funds, the additional attention is like a parking enforcement person?
The only part of the mitigation funds that I'm aware of that we've been using is for those bike patrols.
Okay.
There's been parking, parking also.
Is there parking?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not aware of that, but there's, you know, this, that example of where it told you there are 400 plus examples of us going down there, that's just people that are working their regular routes. We're going down there spending anywhere from 10 minutes to an hour down there, depending on if they get cleared to go to another call. Because, you know, again, we go into the stack call system and we sell the service calls.
Have you analyzed the complaints according to the time of day?
That we haven't had a chance to do yet. I was asking, I was talking to Sergeant Hatchet, who was our former ComStat data person. We have a new officer that's doing it now, who is on vacation, I believe. So we couldn't split the time up and get the data from, I asked about that, you know, do we have a difference between that, you know, 6 to 10, 6 to 11 data compared to the day, the day calls? I don't have that answer.
Have nuisance calls in Brookline Village increased over the last six months or so?
Yes. Parking tickets, so I can tell you just an example with parking complaints. On average, you know, when we look at the last four, like the last five years, last year, we had 103 parking related issues or complaints called in. Previous years was 35, 40, 42. But do we know that's from NEDA-related calls or is it from the general construction mess that's down in the village? You know, and we couldn't even compare, I don't think we could even look at the number of tickets written because we're putting extra people in there and making a more concerted effort to increase our parking enforcement more so than last year. So I don't think you could fairly compare the data on that.
I mean, I do, I do think we just, we just know that there are more calls coming in as a result of NEDA. Being there, we've heard a full audience and more in emails and other folks. So we know that there are folks making these calls that are directly related to, I mean, in a way that the community is impacted in a way it wasn't before. I don't know if there's any question about that. I think for us, I mean, I would, I think as we think about what hours are the right hours, I think the hour-by-hour data, when it is available, would be helpful. I think the debate, the data post September 30th would be helpful to have too. I also think just to, you know, to put this out there too, there are other variables in play right now. The vaping ban may have an impact on, I don't know, the, the volume of customers that are, that are coming to NEDA. That may end up being a permanent ban, it might be a temporary ban, we don't know. And also, there's been issues with the availability of certain flowers, I think they're called, buds or whatever it is, and that that also may have an impact, rising or falling. I think one of the things that's so difficult in this, I was talking to a resident about this recently, is trying to figure out what the right solution is when there are so many variables that are impacting volume and all these other issues essentially around the same time, like in the same timeframe, including the variable that we put into place a few weeks ago, which was the mitigation.
Yeah.
Right? So that's also a new variable that's maybe impacting, maybe making things better. As far as I can tell, we just don't know yet, right? It's just too soon to tell.
Correct.
Right?
So any, any, you know, quick fixes, probably they're not going to be the appropriate approach to take, so I think that's, that's the message I hear from them. Any other questions? No?
Well, I mean, you know, quick fixes are, I think that we need to look at the situation before recreational and after recreational. And that seems to be, if you talk to the people who are complaining, that is where, what they see. They see before and after.
Yeah.
And they see the medical, and they had fears about the medical, as did I, I wanted appointment only, that did not pan out. I, you know, unreservedly admitted that, it did not pan out. But they see that it's impacting them after medical, after, after we approved recreational. And I think that's, that has got to be a fact that comes through loud and clear. And, you know, we've had construction in that area for much longer than we've had a recreational marijuana facility. We had children's hospital, construction went on for how long? Five years?
And we were getting complaints on that.
Yeah, I know.
It was very intensive.
Not the volume you're getting now. And I think that, I think we need to be, we need to act and to, I mean, that's our job, is to act and to protect the people in the communities. I mean, when we had that, when we had that issue with the restaurants in Precinct One that Jim Franco referred to the other night, we took action. We changed the license. We instructed them not to, you know, clean up after 10 o'clock or 10:30, I don't remember the exact time. We instructed them about the, you know, not using the alley and banging garbage cans around and et cetera, et cetera. So we made conditions to their license. And I think, you know, we need to make a stab at doing something that will potentially work. We know it's worked in other places and so we should try it. And we can always say, okay, it, you know, maybe we could expand it to, from seven to eight or whatever, or, but I think we absolutely have to take that.
I think the question for me is, is, is I'd love to take the kind of approach that uses a scalpel, not one that uses a hatchet, to address the problem. Because certainly if we said you can only serve, you can only serve, sell whatever it is, one type of bud by reserve only and only have five, you know, customers an hour, yeah, sure, it would solve the problem, but that's taking a hatchet to the problem. So the, so the way that I'm thinking this through is, what is the way that we can solve the issues that the community is having without, while having the least impact on, on, on this particular business, which we have in town, right? And so solving the problem, like addressing the issues that are happening. Now, there are folks that believe that the way to do that is through the three means that are, that are proposed in the special town meeting warrant article, the set of warrant articles. You know, I don't know, I'm, I'm inclined to agree that, that the hours are too permissive and that cutting down the hours certainly during the late night hours and on Sundays would be of benefit to the community. That seems to make sense to me. What the right hours are, I think the advisory committee thinks it should be 8 o'clock. What the right hours are is a topic of discussion. I don't know about the other pieces. I don't know about halting new licenses while we establish some commission that's, I don't know about that. And I don't know about the reserve ahead, I don't know about the, or the appointment only model. I just, I don't know that I'm there yet. I think we also have not had an opportunity to see whether or not what this board has already voted is, is working or not. It just hasn't had enough time.
That's going to take months. And if it doesn't work, then we're that much further behind, you know?
If it does work, we've over, we've used the hatchet.
The scalpel.
Well, no, the hatchet. Well, okay, whatever. It's your metaphor.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
So just to be clear, all I propose is that we take action on the hours.
Yeah.
I think I've made myself clear. Let me just close by saying, I think it sets a horrible precedent to do licensing via warrant articles before town meeting. And I think we have the power today, I think we should exercise it and respond to the voluminous amount of complaints that at least I've received.
And I would like an opinion from town council as to whether if we voted it next week, it would go into effect immediately. Or have, you know, do we have to wait until the end of this current license? And I think that's, that's an issue. But I agree with you that we should, we should vote it. I would also promote a reserve ahead or appointment only system. And, you know, I think that I have expressed this numerous times, that I would be thrilled to see a delivery system. And I believe that the state is working towards that, but who knows when we'll get there? It might, might take them five years and, you know? And I think that's, that would be, that would be an excellent solution because it means cutting down on the traffic. You have one delivery or two or three delivery vans going out and not very many people coming in, and that's good.
Of course, that raises a lot of questions which would delay any implementation related to security. I mean, trucks running around town with marijuana.
We can't, we can't do that now anyway because it's not permitted by the state. So, you know, we have to do what we can do and then adopt other measures as they come along and...
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. And that's the end of our agenda. We're getting out fairly early relative to a couple of recent meetings.